Okay, go right ahead.
Okay, welcome everyone. The special meeting of the Montessorino City Council on May 12th is now called order. Instructions?
Yes, okay. Good evening, council members, staff, and meeting participants. Thank you for joining us this evening for May 12th, Montessorino, special meeting of the City Council. Prior to roll call, I would like to make clear for the record of this meeting, and it should reflect it in the minutes, that the City Council meeting is being conducted pursuant to provisions of the Brown Act and recent executive order issued by the Governor to facilitate teleconferency to reduce the risks of COVID-19 transmission at public meetings. The Brown Act sets strict rules for teleconferencing. It requires that each teleconference location be identified in the notice and agenda, that it be accessible to the public, that members of the public be allowed to address the councils from that location, the agenda be posted at that location, that at least one member be here at the council chambers, and that at least an aquarium of the council be participating within the Montessorino. The Governor's executive order has suspended those rules. The executive order does require that we continue to notice meetings in advance and that we provide members of the public an opportunity to offer public comment. House rules, before the meeting is called to order, I'd like to point out a few things to assist council members, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, please keep your microphones muted until you wish to speak. You have a hot mic. At the top left, there is a presenter chat. Council members should use this to report technical problems such as inability to hear. At the top left, there is also an attendee chat. This is for the public to report technical problems. For the public to comment under oral communications or on any agenda item, at the top center of the screen, there is a caption box where comments limited to 350 words can be submitted and be read into the record. This limit is set to adhere the typical three-minute allowance. Only attendings using the application can submit questions. Participation from a telephone will allow for listening only and does not allow for any feedback. And finally, because we are not all in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call.
And Glisie, I believe we also allow members of the public to submit comments by email. Would you like to read off that email address?
Sorry, you're welcome to submit to Glisie. It's G-L-O-I-S-Y@cityofmontessorino.org.
All right, thank you, Glisie. Before we do roll call, I just want to remind our residents that the chat box feature should only be used to report technical issues. Please do not submit public comments or chat with council members or the public through this feature. Thank you. Glisie, roll call, please.
Okay, Councilmember Lahy?
Yes, present.
Councilmember Laboue?
Present.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Mayor Protem Luthold?
Present.
Mayor Lawler?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, Glisie, are there any oral communications, any members wishing to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda?
There. Nothing to report as of now, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to new business. Item one, annual council strategic goal-setting session for fiscal year 2021 and discussion of potential future programmatic goals, including tree planting programs, vacation rental regulation, smoking regulation, and city ethics policy. Glisie, are there any members of the public wishing to comment on this agenda item?
Nothing to report.
Okay, great. Mr. Leonardi, your report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lawler. And I would like to take this opportunity to introduce, of course, a couple individuals who will be joining us this evening on the call. We have our facilitator, Sean Spano, who helped us conduct strategic goals last year. So Sean is on the line with us. We have Melinda Walker, who is doing an artistic impression of what we are speaking about this evening, our goals and our work plan. And she will present to us a video presentation in time lapse of her drawing our conversation this evening, putting it in artistic format. So Melinda is on the line with us as well. Jessica Khan, our city engineer, is on the line. Reynold Samoranos is on the line, our interim finance manager. I believe Ms. Jeanne Hamilton is with us, our planning department. Jeanne, are you with us? And of course Sergio Rudin, our city attorney, is with us this evening. So getting past the introductions here, strategic goals is the time of the year prior to our budget, where the council decides on picking items for the work plan for the coming year. In this case, it'd be fiscal year 2021. And most of the items that we have on the agenda this evening in attachment two are essentially items that are outside our normal scope of work, which 70% of the time we're running the city, we're taking in planning applications, we're handling building permits, we're doing our annual business and assessment district stuff and all those other things. Those are all business that we handle on an annual basis. These are things we would like to do, and this represents approximately 30% of our workload. So getting into that discussion this evening, I look forward to that as a prelude to our budget. Once we determine which items that the council wishes to pursue from the list or anything else, then we could plan for how much it will cost in our coming meetings prior to our budget adoption. We'll plan it into our budget. And then we will create a work plan, what time of the year it is most likely to occur. Case in point, some items are more long-term goals, some items are more short-term goals, and we have to look at our calendar for the rest of the year. When I say the rest of the year, I'm talking about the rest of our fiscal year, so between now and, say, next June 30th of 2021, where we will fit these work items in according to our workload and our ability to create all the staff reports and all the work to get them in place. With that said, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Sean Spano. He will be taking us through a slide presentation. And we will, of course, be stopping along the way, looking for council to interject, ask questions, and Mr. Spano will be leading us through the slides. And then I will be joining back into the conversation, of course, later on, when we start to cover the accomplishments that were made during fiscal 19 and 20, and then the accomplishments we hope to achieve for fiscal year 20 and 21. And that concludes my presentation here.
Okay. Hello, council. Sean Spano here. I'm pleased to be with you this evening. I went back over and I did my first strategic planning session with the Montessorino Council in 2017, so this is my fourth time working with you all, and again, I'm pleased to be here. We have the slides, and I'll walk through the slides. Some of it'll be a presentation, but most of this is interactive. This is obviously your strategic planning session, council, so I will tee that up in terms of presenting some information, and then there's some questions that I'll be asking along the way and then eliciting your feedback and input as we go. Next slide, please. We have four different purposes for the strategic planning session tonight. We'll kick off with an environmental scan, a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And traditionally, this is a way that you start a strategic planning process by looking a big picture, looking outside of the organization in terms of the environmental scan, but also looking inside the organization, and again, assessing strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We'll check in, you have a council vision statement, you also have a series of values, those are documented, and we'll check in on those and see if those are still relevant, if you would like to make some changes to those, some tweaks, additions. We'll entertain those ideas. And then we'll also put in front of you tonight some sample mission statements. You don't currently have a mission statement, and Steve and staff have put some samples together for you to respond to, and we'll review those and see if you want to go forward with one of those mission statements. As your city managers just mentioned, we'll do a check-in, actually, we'll have Steve do the check-in on the 2019-2020 goals, your current goals, and do an update on those. And then that will pave the way for really, in some ways, which is the heart of the meeting tonight, what are your new strategic goals for 2021? And we have a series of goals to share with you to see if those fit what your expectations are, and I also know Steve has elicited some ideas from you, so you'll see your ideas in that list of goals as well. And then we will check in on the ethics policy. You currently have an ethics policy. There's a couple other governance items that are in your packet. And the question on that fourth meeting purpose bullet is the council code of conduct policy, and that would be new. And the question for council is, do you want to adopt that council code of conduct policy? And if so, does the sample that's in your packet, does that work, or would you like to see some changes to those? There's several other items in the packet that Steve will walk through in terms of the building design and a couple other items that we'll get to at the end. So with that said, as setting the context for the meeting tonight, I'm ready to jump into the SWOT analysis, if that works for you, council. So let me just jump into this. You'll see on the next slide, please, you'll see that staff has started the SWOT analysis, and by no means is this a finished product. And so you'll see, we'll start with strengths. And what staff has identified as strengths of the organization, strong reserves, steady revenue stream, and a simple business model. So I'm curious to hear, what additional items would you add on to that? What other strengths do you see in the organization?
Mayor Lawler, if I can make a suggestion, when Mr. Spano raises the question, if you can call on council in some fashion, whether it's right to left, left to right, or alphabetical, if they have any comments they'd like to add?
Well, I can see them all. If you want to raise your hand, I could call on you.
That would be great, because I don't have that visibility, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Laboue?
Hi. Actually, this is a great start, thank you. I would just expand the simple business model to be a little more explicit about it. For me, you know, we have a lot of services that are in-sourced, and to me, those are core services, so that creates differentiation. And then for the outsourced services, that's really context. And so those are all of the other needed services to support the rest of the organization. So I think in marketing terms, you always, between in-source, outsource, it's very common to refer to things that are core services versus context services. And so, you know, most people won't understand what a simple business model is. I think you could be a little more explicit there.
We'll make note of that.
All right, anybody else? Mayor Protem Luthold?
Thank you. I had also some input on the simple business model. I think it's somewhat intrinsic in it, but we may want to be more specific, referring to the flat organizational structure, which I think is a strong strength of the city and the city's management.
Right.
Okay, have you been yelled? Councilmember Lahy?
Yeah, so basically, I think this is a good place to start. I think we should spend a little bit more time on our weaknesses also, and it's kind of hard for us to do that, but I think we should, because nobody wants to point out their own weaknesses, so that's a little harder to do. I would say the employee morale or the employee situation over the last year, figuring out how to make sure we have happy and satisfied employees that are satisfied with what they're doing, they're properly motivated, and that we understand their complaints, if there are any, before they leave the city. So I would say that would be our weakness that needs to be identified a little bit more specifically.
Councilmember Turner?
I'm mute.
You're unmuted. Councilmember Turner?
I wanted to go back to your question on making comments on the strengths. Can we go back to that? Mayor Lawler? So what I'd like to do, what I'd like to make a comment on that is, we have, one of our strengths at this point in time is that we have brought the city up to a lot of new processes, fundamentals is new, we're now using ADP instead of using paper and pencils, so I think those are our strengths. And we're also actively engaging the community and city government. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spano?
Yes, excellent, that's great. Great additions there. Let us move, as the council member suggested, let us move on to weaknesses. And staff has started the list here with few operational guiding policies, human resources, HR finance, succession planning is also seen as a weakness. You can, council members, comment on that and then add to the list as you see fit.
All right, anybody like to speak about the weaknesses? Councilmember Turner?
Since I went last, I guess I'll go first, is our inability to close on the litigation of the project case. That's one of our greatest weaknesses.
Anyone else? Any other councilmember? Laboue?
Yeah, litigation actually might not be a weakness, it might actually be a threat. So maybe we should save that, it probably goes in the threat column. I think, you know, Steve, so you're kind of, few operational guiding policies, I would be much stronger about that. I mean, several, well, almost half a year ago, I started an ad hoc committee called operational excellence and customer engagement or something to that effect. I would say that we have weak operational and fiscal governance with respect to peer organizations and best practices. Now, that's an ongoing process, but I think you need to state it as a weakness that we can implement policies to improve it. And then in terms of succession planning, I would substitute that with what Councilmember Lahy said. I think the term is generally employee engagement, right? But I think that would be a better term for that item. So just those two additions, thank you.
Councilmember Laboue, if you can repeat the first, you said weak operation and fiscal...
Weak operational and fiscal governance.
Governance, okay, got it.
Yeah, with respect to peer organizations and best practices. And that was really the premise of the customer orientation and operational excellence ad hoc committee, which there's a presentation online or should be in public record about that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anybody else at this time? Yes, Mayor Protem Luthold?
Yeah, I guess I would add to this, and it's really an area for improvement, and I think it also goes into the weaknesses historically, and that is really being proactive, specifically with regards to addressing housing and community engagement. So lack of proactivity has been a weakness that we can improve on.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spano?
We're moving over to the opportunities category, and as several of you have mentioned, these categories can bleed together a little bit, and some can show up in more than one spot, or we could have a little bit of a discussion about whether it belongs in one or the other. I think the key point for us here today is to make sure we get it all down here and work it into the category that it best fits. Moving on to opportunities, opportunities, an MOU, a memorandum of understanding is an opportunity, an ability to hire key personnel. To start the list and comment on those, council, and addition to that, add some new opportunities.
Councilmember Laboue?
I really don't know what MOU is about, so Steve, maybe you can talk about that one. But I think that we should add the union process here, because I think it's kind of two things. The whole union process is really, you know, it's a structured way to address employee concerns, and I think the union process also will drive some of the structural, you know, employee definitions around employee handbook and benefits and so forth. And so I think that the union process really should be viewed as an opportunity. That's all I have for that one.
And Councilmember Laboue, if I can interject, the MOU is the memorandum of understanding proposed by the Montessorino Employees Association, and that essentially is the union agreement. So it presents an opportunity for the organization, both for the employees and the city of Montessorino to come to an agreement and, as you mentioned, adopt some policies and practices moving forward for the organization and the employees. So that is essentially the union process.
Okay, so if you just kind of reword it to actually state it explicitly about union process, I think that would be better understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, in terms of opportunities, I would like to see our IT services upgraded in many respects. The way we service our citizens, right, the way they can enter information into the system, and the way we can actually interact with them, not only with them coming into City Hall, but also we can interact with them interactively online. And with respect to that, one of the things that perhaps we could look into is improving our internet service in Montessorino.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lahy, would you like to add anything?
Basically, I think Councilmember Turner, it is a good point. I mean, the whole data gathering opportunity or being able to access all the files we have in Montessorino, it'd be good if you could get that taken care of. It's been brought up, but obviously we didn't have the resource at that time. The opportunity to hire key personnel is quite an opportunity, because we are using consultants or contractors instead of individuals that could be part of the city, so that would be a good place to work harder on. Those are my comments, thank you.
All right. I think going at our opportunities, the community center and community engagement, is that an opportunity piece, maybe reconsidered?
Certainly, we can add that to the opportunities, community engagement, that was mentioned in the previous category by Mayor Protem Luthold, as being a weakness, but there could be some overlap in these categories as well. So community engagement, when something is essentially a weakness, it could also be an opportunity to correct a weakness, so we can add that in this category as well.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Lahy?
Yeah, basically, I think that's a good thing that Mayor's brought up, because that needs to be one of our key opportunities to be able to... I would phrase it not slimmer to the community center, but to use all the resources we do have, because there may be other resources that are outdated that are underutilized at this point. Obviously, that's a very big one.
Thank you. Councilmember Laboue?
Yeah, I think that's a good one, I forgot about that. It should be an opportunity. You know, we essentially have a resource, the Annex Building, that we have is underutilized, and so it can be viewed as an opportunity to go create something of value for the community with that Annex Building. And so I think that's the way I would kind of word it, is that the Annex Building is a resource that's underutilized and can be transformed into a community center slash Veterans Memorial or, you know, whatever. But, you know, that is a good opportunity.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Turner, did you have something?
Sorry. I guess Councilmember Laboue wanted my comment on the litigation to be under threats, and I don't have a problem with that, so we can put that under threats.
Moving on to the threat category.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Turner. I had noted that as well, we can put the closing out the litigation under threat. And then in addition, staff started the list with increasing OPEB and pension expenses, your post-employee benefits, and then the uncertainty and fallout from COVID-19. Add on to those, council, and comment on the two that are currently there, please.
Does anybody have anything to add? Councilmember Laboue?
So with regard to the Good Neighbor Resolution, the whole premise of that Good Neighbor started out with basically two threats, and so maybe we should just verbalize them and put them here. The first one was state law aggressively promotes housing density and quotas contrary to Montessorino values. And the second one is high real estate values incentivize housing density contrary to Montessorino values. And so those are two threats.
Councilmember Laboue, can you repeat the second one?
Sure, sure. High real estate values incentivize housing density contrary to Montessorino values. And those are the two threats that are in the front of the presentation for the Good Neighbor Resolution.
Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I wanted to make a comment here, and I'm not sure it's under a threat versus a weakness. The last two years, that was last year and this year, we're actually seeing an increase in our revenue, and that's from permits from the Hacienda project, the housing development project. And I believe that that project will end in next year. And so what we're going to see is a decrease in our revenue stream from 6 million to 3.5, if I'm correct. And I'd like Ray and Ali to actually look at that to give us a realistic number of where we see our revenues coming down. Thank you.
Councilmember Laboue?
Yeah, I think actually this is in progress, I mean, maybe, I think, in terms of this, I think falls under weak operational and fiscal governance, because one of the governing or one of the, you know, guiding principles in finance is that recurring expenses should be no more or should not grow faster than recurring revenue. And so if this policy, fiscal policy, were in place, you would have a check on that particular item, and it wouldn't be just specific to the Hacienda project. And so I think we should take note of it, because it definitely is a real thing, and it was brought up in the last budget session about how the revenues were growing artificially fast due to that project. But really, I think where this belongs is an update to the fiscal policy about recurring... recurring and revenues and recurring expenses.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alahi?
Yeah, I think that's, all those things are going to be considered in the budget thing. I'm looking at it as an opportunity. I mentioned the bond issuance right now because the interest rates are so low, you could finance, you know, municipal bonds usually go for lower interest rates anyway. So we could raise some money and pay down and use it towards paying off some of the pension indebtedness to the extent that's just a transaction. To the extent we have additional money available, we may, you know, we may need to hold on to that for other reasons, but I would suggest we should take a serious look at paying off our pension and OPEB liability to the extent possible by getting, you know, 1% or 1.5% bonds or maybe even cheaper than that. So we may need to get some financial types, JP Morgan or somebody else involved in that.
All right, thanks. Council, Mayor Protem Luthold, do you have anything you'd like to add?
So it wasn't really so much in the threats, it was kind of an overlapping, both in the opportunities and the strengths really, and maybe the flip side would be a threat if it's not there. But I had a comment that basically the energy, certainly that the new city manager is bringing and the professionalism that he's applying to the job, as well as councilmember Labovay's push from behind on really raising the level of professionalism. I think those are real strengths and opportunities that we can use to allay some of these threats.
All right, thank you. Mr. Spano, would you like to continue?
Yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you very much. That was a, that was a really good discussion and wonderful additions to the SWOT analysis. And so typically in strategic planning, starting with the SWOT analysis to do that kind of environmental scan, and then we will start drilling down and be, getting a little bit more narrow as we get into the vision, values, and mission. Moving on to the next slide, the next two slides are slides that will lay out what the strategic planning process, the elements are, and then the strategic management process. So these are big picture slides, and I'll just walk through them. If you have any comments or reactions, we can open that up. So in terms of the strategic planning elements, what goes into a strategic plan? Typically, a strategic plan starts with mission, vision, and values, and those are informed by information and input like a SWOT analysis, as are the strategic goals. And as your city manager mentioned at the very opening, those strategic goals are the goals that are like 30% of the work that gets done. These are not operational tasks. These are special strategic goals that, using the iceberg model of city work, city government work, these are above the waterline. Strategic goals, typically a strategic plan has three, five, eight strategic goals, depending, and then underneath each one of those strategic goals, you have your strategic objectives. These are sub-goals, enabling goals. So as you have this big strategic goal, what are the, what are the smaller goals, the objectives underneath that need to be accomplished in order to accomplish the major strategic goal? And we will get into those strategic goals and strategic objectives here later on this evening. That starts getting from, moving from the broad, you see the arrow at the bottom, a mission, vision, and values, very broad, strategic goals, broad, becomes a little bit more narrow when you start moving down to the strategic objective level, and you become even more specific as you start getting into key performance indicators. These would be the key performance indicators for your strategic objectives. And then that all feeds into what your staff work plans. These are, these are very detailed documents, who's working on what, what's the progress, what's the timeline, what's the markers of success, the empirical markers of success, the key performance indicators that enable you to monitor performance and progress. So our task this evening is to check in on mission, on vision and values, and then see if you want to add a mission. It would be great at the, by the end of the evening, you have identified your 2020, 2021 strategic goals and your objectives underneath that, and we've started making progress on the key performance indicators. And then after the meeting and after this is all finalized and you have formally adopted your strategic goals and objectives, then we can start working specifically, and Steve can start working specifically with staff on the, on the work plans. So that's kind of a very traditional, conventional way of looking at strategic planning, what the elements are. And then pulling the lens back even broader, how does that fit into managing, doing strategic management from even a bigger perspective? And so these, this slide here lays out, first, you need to determine what your position is. Where are you? And this is where council, your insights come into play, where staff's insights come into play, you're eliciting input, you're constantly doing that, talking to your constituents, listening to public comment and hearing public comment and at meetings, and also eliciting ideas through your webpage and other ways, and your commissions and, and community organizations. So you're determining your position by, of course, listening to the community. A SWOT analysis helps determine what your position is, what we just did. You have several documents that help determine what your position is. Obviously, a general plan's a very important document. You have budget reports, but you have lots of other documents as well. So all of that information and data goes into determining what your position is. Then you need to develop what your strategy is. Once you know where you are, where is your strategy? Where do you want to go? And as we indicated on the slide, previous slide on, oh, I'm sorry, next slide, as we indicated on the previous slide, that strategy, a strategic plan, consists of mission, vision, values, strategic goals, and objectives. And that's really our focus this evening. Then, then after tonight, staff will start building the plan, putting it all together, developing those staff work plans. And then, as Steve mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, part of the reason for doing strategic planning at this time of year is because you want to get your strategic goals and objectives set, your key performance indicators, so you can align to the budget process, which I know you're embarking on here shortly. And then this all helps to determine performance and to drive performance. You implement the plan, you implement the work plans, you're monitoring progress as you go, you're adapting, making course corrections as needed, and you're updating your strategic plan as needed. With some agencies and some city councils that I've worked with, we will do a strategic planning this time of year, maybe even a little bit earlier, and then do a six-month check-in. Where are we on the strategic plan? Is it still relevant? Is it still useful? Do we need to make course corrections or adaptations? So these last two slides are big picture sort of slides to see what we're doing tonight and how it fits into your larger process of managing operational work, yes, but mostly your strategic work for the city. So any questions or comments about these information slides, these last two information slides?
Any questions? No, doesn't look, doesn't look like it.
Okay, then I'll move us forward then. In your packet, you have attachment number four. And attachment number four is at the top, it says, city council role, vision, and values document. And so when I first worked with Montessorino in 2017, we did a strategic planning session, it might have been, say, February of that year. And then coming out of that strategic planning session, a subcommittee was formed, an ad-hoc committee was formed, with the mayor at the time, councilmember Turner, you might remember, working on that ad-hoc committee, with a city manager, Fagoni, who was interim at the time, and then I assisted as well. And what that ad-hoc committee did, they put together a statement, which is the council role statement, and you have that there. That's somewhat unique. Not all, not all city councils have a council role statement. I think the ad-hoc committee felt it was useful. Then you move down into your council vision statement here. And part of our task here over the next couple of minutes is to check in on that vision statement. Is it still relevant? Is it still meaningful? Have you, do you have any suggestions for making tweaks or changes to it? So your current council vision statement is, the city council will continue to strengthen the community and promote a sense of unity. Together, the council strives to maintain the unique character and beauty of the city. So let me just stop there. Any reactions, thoughts to your, to your current vision statement?
Do we have any councilmember questions or comments at this time? Doesn't, I think we're good, Sean?
Excellent, very good. And then the ad-hoc committee, and this, of course, the ad-hoc committee put this together, but this then went back to the full council who formally adopted it, a set of, a set of council values. And I won't read the descriptions, I'll just read the headers, but you've got a really nice set of values here. Integrity and professionalism. We just heard how you appreciate and see as a strength and an opportunity the professionalism that your new city manager has brought to the organization. We'll talk a little bit later on about your ethics policy and code of conduct policy playing into integrity. Transparency and openness, another value. Performance accountability, measurable performance goals. As a service delivery organization, you want to have effective and efficient services. And I should say, just backing up a step, vision describes where you want to go, the direction you want to go, and values are describing what's important to the, what's important to city council, what's important to the organization. So effective and efficient services, also a value, physical responsibility, and then quality of life for all residents. So that, I do a lot of this work, and I have to say, that's a really nice set of values that you have there. So let me just pause there, and any comments, reactions to your vision or to your values?
Councilmember Labovay?
Yeah, I like the vision and the values. I guess my only comment would be, how does this trickle down into sort of, you know, staff-level organizational objectives and, you know, so if we say it's a council vision and a council values, is that implicitly also the operational staff's organ, you know, is that their organizational values and vision, or is that considered separate?
I'll answer this and then turn it over to Steve. My sense is, is that council is driving this vision and values and with the expectation that it's adopted by staff, it's adopted by the entire organization. Steve, you might have a different way of looking at that?
Thank you, Mr. Spano, and I, I agree, it's a top-down approach. Council adopted this. I would imagine at the time, this was something that council came up with without much staff input. I was not on the council, perhaps councilmember Turner, I think, was the only council member on the council at the time. But what it does, it establishes, you know, a theme for the organization. It's similar to a mission statement, but in this case, it's called a vision statement. And in some aspects, you know, we're proposing this evening about looking at a mission statement, and one could say, well, do we want the vision statement to be the mission statement? But this should be essentially the look and feel of the organization. This is what the mission is. This is how we're going to represent the people of Montessorino. This is what the community, this is the definition of our community, right? And it should be staff working with council in, you know, conjunction with council to deliver the service to the people under kind of these, these broad guidelines. This is what we want to achieve.
Okay. Yeah, just, just to be clear, I mean, vision statement is, is supposed to be aspirational, right? So this is what an organization wants to become versus a mission statement is very much what the organization does, you know, what, what values, what, what, what deliverables and so forth, does it deliver? So it's more of a how versus this, this is more of a where would you like to be type of thing. I think this is a fine statement, and if it trickles down, that's fine. I'm just wondering if we should make it more explicit that it's not just the council that is held accountable to these, it's every, everyone that works for the city.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alahi?
Yeah, I think these are great, great values. I, I don't know if there's a need for it or not, but I thought maybe we could go a little bit further on our, it says, we seek to earn the public's trust and confidence. I thought maybe we should add language to that and to, which would basically be, and to treat all residents with respect regardless of race, religion, gender, or sexual orientation. Maybe you could add that in specifically in there.
All right. Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify here what we did in 2017. So in 2017, we had a set of values similar to this one that was pretty outdated, and it was also, rather than being a strategic, strategic values, there were very more tactical values. And the council at that time put an ad-hoc committee together, so that was mayor and standing and myself, to put, to put this value statement together for the council. And the idea was that, it wasn't just him and I, we also, we also included Deborah Fagoni, who was our city manager at that time. We then came up with, with the value statements and our goals, and then we reviewed it as a group, and we brought it in front of the council, and the council voted on it. So that's how it came about.
All right, thank you. I think, I have one comment regarding what councilmember Alahi had said, and I believe that the things that you were asking for could be considered covered under integrity and professionalism, where it says, we shall work together to serve the community by respecting and trusting each other. And also through, let's see, what is it, quality of life for all residents. I think, I think that that wording, I think it's somewhat covered in there, so I don't know if that's something that can be expanded or if that's implicit.
Yeah, it's probably covered, it's part of the seal, right? But I think it makes an affirmative statement from the city that we are constituent, and I may not have covered all the different discriminations that, discrimination still happens. So I think we probably need to be specific to send a message saying, hey, we're, we're a city that, you know, believes in equality for everybody. So whether it's for gender, or race, or religion, or sexual orientation, or any of those sets. So I think a specific statement would be helpful, especially we are talking about our values.
So perhaps under transparency and openness, we say we listen to all ideas and viewpoints. So perhaps there can be something suggested in there.
Yeah, this could go in any appropriate place, I guess. It doesn't have to be a separate subject.
Mayor Lawler, if I could make a suggestion, and if the council seeks, has consensus on this idea, where it says quality of life for all residents, we are committed to continually enhancing the quality of life, and I could say, regardless of age, race, you know, sexual orientation, we can just add a clause or a statement to that quality of life bullet. If, if three councilmembers say yes, we can modify that, this document, and bring it back at a future meeting.
Yeah, I think that would work. I mean, just exclude all the, you know, potential issues that are out there in that one sentence that we, regardless of all, any and all kinds of discrimination and specifically. Because I think that sends a strong message.
Or, you know, we can add it to the overview, essentially, you know, or the council role, we can put it in there in some other aspects, so it covers, you know, starts from the beginning.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, as long as, you know, it shows that we are committed and we care about these things.
Okay.
And Councilmember Sergio, just sort of for a, sort of background, you know, as a public agency, the city is bound by various provisions in state and federal law to, you know, act in manner that in manner that avoids discrimination against any protected class. You know, there's a number of legal requirements by which the city is already, you know, required to not discriminate under various classes that are identified in federal law, and additionally classes that are identified in state law. You know, if, if we were to list all of those classes or identify them in a mission statement, it, it, it actually might be difficult to do so and put that all in one page. So given that the city is required to comply with, with nondiscrimination requirements as a public agency already, I'm, I'm not sure that that's something that we really need to highlight in the city's mission statement.
Okay, thank you, Sergio. Uh, Councilmember Turner?
Yes, my comment here is, is probably for Sean Spano. I have two, two values and goals here that, that you didn't read off, and maybe we missed it, or, or somehow it got dropped off. And one is, our city promotes safe and healthy neighborhoods, and then the other one is, the city promotes healthy city initiatives. Did we put that into one of the other goals?
Councilmember Turner, I, I am going to have to look into that, because when I pulled this document up, that's what I had from 2017, and it's not to say that those other goals, other values weren't on there, I did not have those on there. So what I will do is I will check on my documents to see if they're there. I do know that you have, this document is on your website under the council link, so that's another place to look to see if they're on that document as well. But thank you for bringing that up, for, for reminding me, and I, and I will definitely check on that.
It's Mayor Proton Luthold.
Thank you. I wanted to respond and add, perhaps to what Councilmember Alahi brought up, and, and I do think that under quality of life for all residents, maybe just some simple language without getting, naming all of the technical facets and potentially leaving someone out, but I, I just, just, maybe we can add promotion of inclusiveness and nondiscrimination. So the kind of two facets of it, inclusiveness and nondiscrimination. I think that could put in very few words, but add to that quality of life in that sentence.
Uh, Councilmember, I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Alahi?
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a good start, and I'm not looking for a two-page document. I think, I don't know, Sergio, Attorney Sergio, you seem to think we need to put a whole page on, but a lot of these, a lot of these things are just two sentences that says, you know, you're not going to discriminate for, for these specific classes that are already in the document.
And I, I think Councilmember Luthold, I, I think, really hit on, I think the concern that I was trying to address, which was, you know, I, I, I don't have an issue with what, that particular suggestion, I just didn't want to start enumerating listed classes due to the concern of potentially leaving something out. So, you know, if we keep it general in that manner, I think that's going to be fine.
Sure, yeah, I, I agree with you, Sergio, and I, I really do like the, the wording promoting inclusiveness. I think that pretty much covers it.
Excellent.
A nice phrase, thank you.
So I can definitely add that under the quality of life, I will rewordsmith that, so we keep the existing meaning of the quality of life, which was previously adopted, and then we will add to it, the promotion of inclusiveness and nondiscrimination in some fashion, to make it, to, to bring that point across.
Okay, thank you. Are we, so we have three council members, I believe, giving the nod.
Okay, are we ready to move, are we ready to move forward?
I believe so.
Okay, very good. So it was just mentioned, one of you mentioned that a vision statement is aspirational, it's, it really is future-oriented, and you'll note in your current vision that city council will and the council strives. We're now moving over to mission statements, and you do not currently have a mission statement, and as the council member stated, a mission statement describes kind of your reason for being, what is your sort of core purpose? And so you have, in, as part of the packet, and here on the slides, you have three mission statements to, to choose from, and the first one was developed by a staff. The mission of the city of Monta Sireno is to provide essential services which protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents and visitors while improving the quality of life and practicing fiscal responsibility. So that's one option, and, and even a bigger question, as we move through the, the other two options, do you want to have a mission statement? Do you want to add a mission on to your vision and values? The second option there, the second sample mission statement comes from the general plan guiding principles. The mission of the city of Monta Sireno is to provide high-quality services to residents in an efficient and cost-effective manner that preserves and enhances the unique residential character of Monta Sireno, protects natural resources, and minimizes resident impacts to the environment, and protects and enhances the health, safety, mobility, and welfare of residents. The version number three is identical to version number two, except for the word transparent is included on the second line, second word over after efficient, but otherwise, version three and version two are the same. So the, sort of two questions on the, on the, on the table here. One, does council want to adopt a mission statement to go with your vision and values? And second, do you have a preference for one of these mission statements, or perhaps one of these mission statements with some additions or changes?
Okay, thank you. Who would like to go first? Mayor Proton Luthold?
Thanks. I, I, on initial read, I was attracted to version two, but as you point out, the word transparency in version three, I think, does offer a small improvement, and I think we can have the entire thing with the sentence getting only a little bit run on by simply adding to the end of version three, comma, while practicing fiscal responsibility, and we get everything in there.
Okay, Councilmember Labubay?
Yeah, it's, yeah, I like the, I like including the, the guiding principles from the general plan. But I, maybe to Councilmember Luthold's comment, we, if we want to add fiscal responsibility in explicitly, I think that's sort of in the efficient piece of how we're going to run the city government, I think we would have to kind of bring it into that first part of the sentence, rather than tack it on to the end. So maybe we'd think about that, maybe, you know, so if everyone's in agreement that we should adopt a mission statement, maybe we need to take this as homework or something, or, you know, maybe we can quickly get to resolution here. But I, I mean, for me, it was, efficient was, was part of the fiscal responsibility piece.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Alahi, do you have anything to say? Councilmember Turner?
Did you call me?
Yes, I did.
Okay, good. Sometimes you break up, so. I, I think we have the idea, so we just, all we need to do is to wordsmith it, and, and I guess Sean Spano and, and, and Steve can probably do that offline. But, you know, combining version one and two is, is fine.
All right, Councilmember Labubay, something to add?
Oh, so, sorry, maybe I misspoke. It's not, not efficient, I think the cost-effective is the fiscally responsible piece, so I'm sorry, that's, that's the one. I mean, we can change that word to something like fiscal responsibility, but I think cost-effective kind of covers it. And I think cost-effective, doesn't that come from one or the other? Oh, it says fiscal responsibility, so yeah, so, I mean, we could change those words around.
Okay. Well, personally, I like the simplicity of, of the first version, simply because the other versions incorporate things that are already in our guidelines, but I like them all. So, you know, I, I, if everyone feels strongly about version three, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll jump in here. So what I'm hearing here is, there seems to be some agreement around version number three and working in fiscally, fiscal responsibility, and just working that wording in, and I see a couple different places to do it, but that's something that, as Councilmember Turner suggested, Steve and I can, and do, do a little wordsmithing and bring it, bring it back to you to see if that meets with your approval.
Okay, yes.
Mayor Lawler, if I can comment. I'm thinking of taking the words cost-effective out of line three of version three and adding the words fiscal responsible, fiscally responsible manner. So that way, because cost-effective is one way of looking at it, but fiscally responsible, as Councilmember Alahi mentioned earlier, perhaps there's a way to borrow money to bond, to build streets or do something. Someone might not look at that as being cost-effective, but it might be fiscally responsible. So that, that, that is, I guess, a more broad, a more broad term. But if, with some consensus on version three, and then adding the words fiscal responsibility from version one, in, in, maybe in place of cost-effective, and/or, as Mayor Proton Luthold mentioned at the end, add another comma. I do agree with you, Mayor Lawler, that sometimes these can be long, so sometimes when they're long, the vision is greater, sometimes when they're short, the vision is more concise, so it's just a matter of opinion as well. But the good news is, is that you're all on board to adopt a mission statement. I think that's, I think it's much needed, and this will be the mission statement for the whole community, so. And it can be changed later, so this, you know, we can review this every year going forward.
Okay, cool, thank you. So I think we're in agreement for, for adopting version three with the words fiscally, instead of cost-effective, in a fiscally responsible manner, correct? That was your suggestion? Is everyone okay with that? Yep, I'm getting nods, yep, okay.
Excellent.
Fantastic.
Great.
Very good.
Moving on.
Moving on, very good, thank you. Okay, so we are now moving over, we have now wrapped up mission, vision, values, and now we'll do a, a brief check-in on the, on your current goals, your 2019, 2020 strategic goals. Attachment one in your packet lays out what those are, lays out what the goals are, and then Steve has provided text in there, which is updating those in terms of progress that that has been made. So at this point, let me turn it over to Steve to walk you through attachment one and do a review of your current strategic goals.
Thank you, Sean, and I'm pleased to report to council that the 1920, 19, 2019 and 2020 goals have largely been addressed. Some of them are ongoing, they've become part of that daily operations, that 70% or 80% under the water line. Case in point, we'll begin with goal number one in attachment one, improve communication and transparency with residents. Essentially, this is something that Monta Sireno has embraced with our new website. We have a new history section which was added, which was desired by council last year. Also, we've adopted the ClearGov feature. This year, if ClearGov has their product finished, we're going to be using ClearGov to do the whole budget, so we're going to be presenting the budget in a ClearGov format. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that that product is completed, so we can present that further, further use of ClearGov. Develop and distribute a newsletter, have a hard copy and e-copy versions, that is completed and ongoing. We had some great efforts put forth by our staff to come up with a new version of our, our semi-annual newsletter, we have it in spring and fall, and we have a template now that we will use to create that newsletter in-house, and we were actually able to put that together and save some money, and I, we've received some good feedback on that from the community. In addition, this, this dovetails into the next bullet, and less community volunteers to help with marketing and creating content for city communications. We have a new contribu, community contributor feature, so in the future, before we put our newsletter together, we're going to solicit feedback from the community, we have a set of guidelines, and I sent that to you in a communication about a month ago in, in the weekly manager's memo, but we, we have that feature which was desired by council last year, so we can have this interactivity with the community, they can contribute to the newsletter. Develop a social media policy, this was done last year by council, the ad hoc committee created one, and that has been completed. Explore opportunities to partner with KCAT. KCAT provided a quote for recording services. Community volunteer has been recording and posting council meetings on the Monta Sireno city website, so we have someone who is from KCAT, who has been recording our, our meetings. Community partnership with KCAT has been established and is ongoing. I know Councilmember Alahi and Mayor Lawler and Councilmember Turner did interviews with KCAT for their program that will be airing coming up about the COVID-19 crisis, and we are also featured on their website as one of their partners, so they have our city seal on their, on their front page. So that is, again, an ongoing below-the-water-line item. I can pause at this, this juncture, if council has anything they would like to add or discuss about that, or I can move on to point two. We can take all five and then discuss at the end.
Need to comment on it this time, or can we keep going? We can keep going.
Okay. Item number two, improve infrastructure, transportation, pedestrian, and bicycle safety. And it says, utilize and empower the Better Streets Commission, expand their role, might need to change their original charge to accommodate the change. So I've been here for four months, going on five months, and I'm very proud of the work of, you know, the Better Streets Commission with the guidance of city engineer Jessica Khan. Their working items include the safe routes to school, they're currently working on a traffic calming policy, allocation of measure B and SB one funding. For fiscal 20 and 21, the Highway Nine safety and Winchester Boulevard safety will be working items. Council had approved design contracts for those prior to the COVID-19 shelter in place. Improve the sidewalks, complete sidewalk repair project, Highway Nine. Again, we have the Highway Nine project out for design and bid. Staff also requested funds of $500,000 from Assemblymember Lowe's office for the Highway Nine project, and we have Engineer Khan on the line right now, she could probably tell us exactly where that design is for a refresher, I think it's Lexington to Dave's Avenue, that stretch of, of sidewalk on Highway Nine is what, what we're looking at redesigning. Braille bumps on Highway Nine sidewalks were fixed out in front of City Hall, and there's a, was a total of six locations, those were repaired, the ones that were peeling up. Areas around the Dave's Avenue School, the neighborhood traffic circulation and user safety are being worked on by the Better Streets Commission. Graffiti on Highway Nine and on Dave's Avenue has been removed off of a number of signs and off of several walls. Any questions about item number two? And again, this is an ongoing category. I think council also in March of this year voted to increase our PCI from the goal of 70, because we were at 69 or 70, to 75, so Engineer Khan presented a report in March, so that is also moving forward.
Great, any questions at this time? No, it looks like we keep going.
All right. Goal number three from 19 and 20, promote community health and environmental sustainability. Continue to promote healthy cities initiatives. So I wrote in attachment one, this task needs more consideration, and when I looked at our Healthy Cities report card... And when I looked at our Healthy Cities report card, um, we were lacking in several categories. And I think that staff can put together some policies. And if council can, uh, look at those policies and adopt those policies, we could definitely improve our Healthy Cities initiatives and improve our, um, our image and our character to, uh, for, for the community. So, um, we're, that is one of the, one of the, um, tasks under our goals tonight, one of our priorities which is proposed this evening. Participate in regional conservation efforts. So in 2019, the council adopted reach codes. They installed a vehicle charging station. I know in the past, the council joined Silicon Valley Clean Energy. Those are all regional conservation efforts. I have proposed tonight in our goals, uh, a couple more ideas that I think would help the community in the city of Monta Serrino in this category. And if council sees merit in those ideas, we can look to implementing some of those ideas going forward. This is of course, always an ongoing thing. Whenever we have an opportunity to, uh, participate in these types of efforts, we want to continue that below the waterline. Determine funding levels for community and nonprofit groups. So I'm proud to say it was in the month of March, we created a community grants process, CBO. We incorporated a online application. We set funding limits and guidelines for the community-based organizations. So there's no mystery to the process. They go online. There's a few simple questions they answer. They make a request. And then the council, it will be reviewing that at our next meeting, a week from today, May 19th. All of the grant requests will be in front of council for, for approval. Funding for West Valley Community Services for COVID-19 housing assistance. This was something that just came up a month ago at the West Valley Mayor's and Managers Meeting. And I'm proud to say that, and I was not even aware of this, but Monta Serrino was not even a partner of West Valley Community Services. And now we are. We will be part of, um, their website with all their partners. Our seal will be featured on there. And it's, it's an elusive group, a, a great group to be part of as one of the partners of West Valley Community Services. They do a lot of good. So I'm proud to say that we gave them a special grant for COVID-19 and we formed a partnership with them and they do serve our community. So. Any comments on category three? More questions?
Yes, Councilmember Alahi.
Yes, Steve, uh, Mr. Hernandez, that was good work on the grant, especially in this emergency to go forward and get that done. So, uh, thank you for doing that, on our behalf. One, one thing I wanted to add on the, uh, the conservation efforts. We adopted the reach codes. As, as we go into, uh, we can make, uh, uh, using the NX, NXE, uh, you may want to take a look at what, what can be done, you know, whether it is solar, uh, electricity or, uh, heat pumps or some other way would be a good way to go. It may be economical and it'll also continue our commitment to, uh, energy efficiency. So I may suggest do that. And the Silicon Valley Clean Energy people would be very helpful. Uh, they might even have funding actually. They might even have some grants available to do some, uh, improvements in that direction.
Okay. Very good. We can look into that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Nope. Okay, I think we can move on to item, to number four.
Okay. Item number four, goal from 1920. Develop a comprehensive response to housing legislation. Educate council and community on new housing legislation impacts and implications. Develop positions that the city should take. So we applied for and received an SB two grant, which is fantastic. We have a $160,000 grant which was obtained. And we're very proud of that and we look forward to using that, which will help us, um, moving forward with a couple of things. One would be to help streamline our planning processes such that housing will be more accessible. And then we can also use the, the grant to, um, drawing a blank here, I apologize. The grant, we were going to, um, develop our online building permit system. So that is something else we can use it for. And we have, um, that in process currently. So those are two items. Drafted correspondence to state senators about constraints of SB 50 and its implementation in Monta Serrino. Last year, when council adopted this goal, there was a lot of concern around SB 50 and its impacts. SB 50, um, did not pass. And now I think we need to look at the future, what comes up after SB 50, which leads us into the next couple of sentences here. Monta Serrino adopted new ADU guidelines and exceeded Rena numbers for the current cycle several years ahead of schedule. We have been adding housing in Monta Serrino. We have been meeting our housing element numbers. And we have been exceeding our housing element numbers through the use of ADUs as well as the Montalvo Oaks development. Last bullet point or last sentence, monitoring new legislation with the defeat of SB 50. Of course, there, I think there was something like 3,400 bills. And there's probably something like 120 housing bills that are in committee right now, um, that are under review. And dovetailing into the next section, partnering with other agencies, other cities to, in taking action in response to new housing legislations. We've joined the Cities Association Planning Collaborative. This is a replacement for the Regional Housing Collaborative that we had last year and, and prior years that, um, kind of fell apart. But essentially, it's a joint effort among fif- 15 cities in Santa Clara County to come up with responses to new housing legislation that's coming our way. So we did sign up. We paid the $3,300 of the $50,000 for the, um, consultants that they are hiring to represent the 15 Valley cities. And again, that group will be monitoring the new housing legislation and drafting responses. And we are all part of that. Getting to the next bullet point. Consider creating a, a council ad hoc committee and citizens advisory committee. So we do have a council ad hoc committee. On this. And I think the committee is now expired because they are only for one year. Let's see, the CASA compact, it expired on April 16th of 2019. And Councilmember Turner and Councilmember Alahi were both on that committee. There's something that I think we should look at with these committees moving forward. And this is just an aside right now. But that would be every year when we do our strategic goals, we should consider adopting committees for one year from the strategic goals for the fiscal year, uh, strategic goals that we adopt. Therefore, the council members that we cover the strategic goals for, the goals align with the committees that we adopt, the ad hoc committees, and those expire at the next year or they get renewed at the next year. And on this committee, council will just have to decide if you wanted to, um, recreate it, renew it. I, I think, and this has to come to council, um, in a, um, probably in a consent item at a meeting. So maybe we come forward at the, uh, end of the evening with direction on which ad hoc committees to bring forward, if any, when we complete this goal-setting process tonight. So use of SB two funding grants to hire a planning consultant for updating the general plan, improvement of internal planning processes, and work on the 2023 housing element. I think this is a key point. Um, by us obtaining these SB two funding grants, this makes the process a little bit easier when you spend money. And I did obtain a quote for $20,000 from management partners to help us with these three items. So the way the grant with the SB two funding works is that council would have to approve the contract. And I would bring that to council on our meeting next Tuesday, during our meeting next Tuesday in consent, if council approves it. And then we hire the consultant to do these, these items for us from management partners. Then we submit the, uh, the bill to, um, the state of California and they reimburse us. So achievements in category four. Any questions?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Alahi.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that report. I think, uh, good, good work has been done on that. The work I would like to see possible is, uh, we are now part of, whether, uh, they can give us reports on somewhat of a regular basis as to the legislation. I, I assume they're, they're going to hire somebody who is a lobbyist, uh, who is going to keep on top of these, uh, laws that are coming out. Senator Wiener is, uh, you know, he's, he's, he's more anxious to get something passed and there's a bunch of bills out there. Uh, so it'd be good if we can get direct reports from these, uh, these individuals. And with, uh, the way we are meeting right now, it would be easy for them to just log into the webinar and give us reports.
And thank you, Councilmember Alahi. Right when this was forming and right when we sent in the check, perhaps after, it was after the shelter in place. Um, but I do expect more activity from these, from this organization, the Regional Housing Collaborative, from the Cities Association. So I will keep council, of course, informed of when we get those reports and what's going on.
And if you can find out who is a good speaker from that organization, we may be able to have them speak at other, uh, to other organizations also so that, you know, that will be part of our lobbying effort, I guess. So if you can get me a name of a speaker, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Labubey, did you have something?
Uh, just a quick comment. Uh, so, um, Mr. City Manager, there is an SB two, um, ad hoc committee that can address some of these items. But let's, let's, we can wait and discuss that when we get to future items.
All right. Steve?
Yes, and thank you, Councilmember Labubey. And that one is still open until December 3rd of 2020. So that one has time. And that might be direction from council to, you know, just let the, um, CASA compact go by the wayside and then just focus on the SB two ad hoc committee, which is made up of Mayor Protem Luthold and Councilmember Labubey. So thank you for bringing that up. So is everybody ready for bullet five?
I believe so.
All right. Emergency preparedness and wildfire protection. Increase public involvement and enhance public awareness. For example, county weed abatement program. So staff created a public safety section on our new Monta Serrino city website and directed residents with communications about public safety, safety offerings city and county-wide, including the weed abatement program, defensible space, and Los Gatos On-Watch, which is something they could sign up for. In addition to that, we have posted numerous items about, um, you know, go bags, alert SCC, um, everything that comes with any kind of public safety, whether it's from PG&E or San Jose Water. We have all these documentation under a public safety link on our website. Um, Santa Clara County Fire Department, of course. So we really have ramped up that information on our website. And in our newsletter, we directed, that we mailed out to every resident, every resident in Monta Serrino, we really ramped up emphasis on that as well as sending out, um, blurbs in our new feed and newsfeed and our e-blasts. And I tried to send, um, to council on, on a bi-weekly basis, a, um, did you know paragraph? And, and I hope that council takes that paragraph and uses it to inform the community about these things. I hope in the future that we can enhance our social media presence a little bit better. And that's one of my personal goals. We started earlier in the year with Facebook and Instagram. And we had a little bit of complication from the, the Facebook organization. But I hope to also push some of this content out through, through those, um, those mediums because I feel like a lot of our residents are on there. But I'm counting on council to help me and as well as, um, Michelle Quong on our staff here to, uh, help push through Nextdoor, which I think most of our residents view and have access to. And that's again, an ongoing item. Expand the CERT program. Continue to promote CERT through community using all correspondence methods, website, newsletter, e-blast, et cetera. Again, that's tied in with the first category. Obviously, we've had this emergency, this is a different kind of emergency, COVID-19. But it does not take away from the importance of programs like CERT in the event of a fire, an earthquake, or any other disaster. So we will continue to try to recruit new residents for that and, and raise awareness with CERT, with our partnership, uh, the Los Gatos Monta Serrino Police Department. Start a Neighborhood Watch program. We did start one Neighborhood Watch program since I've been on count, um, uh, as the city manager, I almost said it, since I've been on council. Uh, since I've been the city manager. And we also started a Neighborhood Watch program online on Nextdoor. And we replaced and, um, installed some Neighborhood Watch signs throughout the community. And we will continue to do that. I've noticed there are more damaged signs. I think when they're nice and shiny, they're nice and prominent. It tells the community that we care. We did receive some correspondence where I saw something on Nextdoor the other day, how do I become part of Neighborhood Watch? So any new neighborhoods that want to start a Neighborhood Watch program? We hosted a meeting earlier to start the Greenwood program earlier in the year. And we're always welcome, welcoming that opportunity to start new Neighborhood Watch programs. And I think we have seven total in our community now. That's an ongoing item, below the waterline. Prepare for emergency evacuations, evacuation routes, emergency go-bags in each household. So information was provided through public safety links created for our Monta Serrino website and our spring newsletter about alert SCC, alert SCC. More information will be coming in the fall, Peaceful Mountain Monitor newsletter, as well as postings online throughout the year. On these emergency go-bags, what we do is we do not actually create them. We just encourage residents to create them. And all we can do is try to notify residents of the idea of creating their own and putting it out there. I think we can probably, when we have our fire department and our police, when we get past COVID-19, they come in and they do a presentation for us. We had two presentations scheduled that we had to, um, postpone. But I think we can have them speak to this item. What, what should you put in a go bag? Because it's a way to engage residents at a personal level. And I think we'll, we'll mention that to them to bring that into our meeting. And we can publicize that through that, uh, medium as well. Develop a Monta Serrino packet, a welcome packet, which would include emergency preparedness and wildlife, wildfire protection information. So, um, with the Monta Serrino, Los Gatos Monta Serrino Police Department, we have tote bags that we've stuffed with all kinds of information. Information about our library services, about our, our collection and recycling services, our police department, our fire services, everything you can imagine. When a new resident comes to town, it's in that tote bag, as well as welcome letters from the mayor and a couple other letters and correspondence in there. Um, you know, basically it informs the residents of all the services, safety and related offerings for being a Monta Serrino resident. And I was very proud to work with, uh, former clerk. Ms. Chellamango saw this earlier in the year. Um, I know that had been an activity the council was very interested in last year. It was one of the first items, uh, when I was, uh, the city manager at our meeting was mentioned in the future agenda items. And we, we again, recrafted three of the welcome letters describing the park services, the library services, the welcome letter from the mayor and, uh, got our personalized Monta Serrino bags and stuffed them and delivered those to Jackie Rose, the community outreach coordinator with the Los Gatos Monta Serrino Police Department, who delivers those bags every time a new member of our community, uh, moves in. Do we have any questions on category five or comments?
Yes, Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Alahi.
Uh, yes. Did you want me to, um, Mr. Hernandez, to, to, um, talk about future enhancements to this? Or do you want to wait till later?
Councilmember Turner, that is, um, up to you, but either is good with me.
Okay, so, so let me, let me talk about three things. I think that, that we can do to enhance emergency preparedness. One is, is to look at, um, what citizens will, can do during blackouts because that's not part of, of what we're talking about today. The second one is how do we enhance our, our kits, right, to include pandemic? And the third one is perhaps using, uh, Neighborhood Watches as traffic management. The traffic management that we have with, with our, with our pavement committee talks about how do you work on the infrastructure? But I think one of the things that we need is, is real-time reporting on the traffic that's happening day to day. So we can use, we can talk about it later, but we can actually use, um, the Neighborhood Watch program, because we will have a block captain first tree to report it, to report the problems that we have day to day with traffic management. So those are my, not, my, um, comments, general comments. And then when we go into, uh, more detail, I can, I can give you more, more input into that.
Councilmember Turner, if I can inquire about your blackouts comment, are you referring to the PSPS shut offs, the PG&E?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Alahi?
Yes, the, the emergency preparedness will go on, so, uh, I, I think, uh, Councilmember Turner is making some good suggestions. I was going to ask, you stopped doing, uh, presentations because we, we're not meeting in person, but you can have a hundred people on seminars. Maybe we should really seriously consider doing a CERT program, uh, inviting the person and then inviting all of Montessorino, as many people are interested in coming and learning on the program and do it online. Uh, and that same thing would go for Good Neighborhood, uh, and, and invite everybody else, and it may actually be easier for some people. I mean, rather than having to drive down or whatever, they can just log in and do it. Now, I don't know if, uh, this webinar allows that or not, but I know Zoom is really good for that. And there's no, and, and most people now have Zoom in their houses, so that could be a Zoom seminar, because we're really not worried about, uh, too many, you know, any secrets going out, because it's an open seminar. Uh, with, you can do some kind of registration, but I would like to continue this, because this, this lockdown might go on for a while, uh, at least for large meetings. So even though something might start opening up, they may not allow people to show up and, you know, 20 or 30 people show up at one time. So if you can consider doing, uh, you know, CERT's a great thing to do, if you can get a CERT speaker, uh, you know, do it online, uh, we'll all learn from it and, uh, a lot of citizens will, and same thing with the Good Neighborhood Program, so see if you can look at that as part of the emergency preparedness and wildfire protection programs to start these online programs.
Thank you, Councilmember Alahi, and I think that's a great idea. I can work with the Los Gatos Montessorino Police Department and see if they want to send out kind of a global, uh, message to Los Gatos residents and Montessorino residents about online CERT training or something like that, because as you said, sometimes it's difficult to show up in person. But if there is any silver line, silver lining, because of this pandemic, it is the fact that I think people have come together more online in some ways, and they've realized that we can, uh, we can do things this way. Um, and it's interesting, because we're seeming to get through this meeting tonight very well. This is one example. Um, so thank you for that suggestion. I will bring that up with the, uh, with Jackie Rose and the Los Gatos Montessorino Police Department to see if we can plan a CERT event online.
Yeah, that'd be great. Excellent.
Councilmember Labubey?
Hi, uh, so, yeah, this is really a great list of accomplishments here and, but, so I just want to more comment on the process side. You know, Councilmember Luhand's, uh, comment about proactivity currently in the weakness category, you know, this, a lot of this, I think reflects a movement from that into a strength category, hopefully by next year, because I recognize a lot of these accomplishments are actually yours within the last four months. And that, to me, says that these were proactively engaged and proactively executed. Now, I want to very much differentiate from a process perspective, things that are opportunistic, uh, achievements versus deterministic achievements. And so, you know, what my big complaint has been since last year was, uh, inability to actually create deterministic goals and objectives with measurable deliverables and then review that quarterly and actually grade that. And so, you know, so, you know, I think for this one and for the previous year, I think great job, but going forward, I think the bar is going to be raised quite a bit. And when we, you know, so we will address this in a much more proactive and deterministic way, you know, and, but then, you know, not to diminish opportunistic things that come along, yeah, those are great accomplishments, but that can't be the only way at the end of the year saying, hey, here's a bucket of stuff that got thrown against the wall, against objectives, and therefore, uh, we, we met all of our goals. Uh, it needs to be planned in advance, measurable, and, and then, uh, have some systematic reporting against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Labubey.
All right, I just have a quick add. I, I really do like the idea of the Zoom CERT webinar. I am getting emails from Patrick Dirks, and I'm assuming you are too, Councilmember Labubey and Turner, about that they are actually holding webinars. And so maybe we can incorporate that into, um, our website some way. I also know that some of that stuff really needs to be in person, so I'm hoping that they can find a way to get around that. Uh, Councilmember Labubey, you have one more comment?
Yeah, I, I think that was the comment I was going to make, is that there's actually quite a bit of training that's involved in that CERT class, so it's not just informational, it's actually getting out there and practicing how to crib and how to put out fires and how to do first aid and so forth. So, um, I'm not sure how much of that can actually be done, uh, remotely. And I think Rowena is raising her hand, because she's the expert on this, so let her talk.
Go ahead.
So I, I have actually attended all the Zoom trainings that, that, um, the city, I'll call it the city of Los Altos had given, but it's actually from the city of Los Altos. It's not from the city of Los Gatos. And it's Anne Happens Tal. So, so I think, um, Steve, if you were going to talk to them, you ought to talk to, to Anne Happens Tal. So they have a training for, um, pandemics as well that I attended, and, and the author of the book, um, Resiliency During Pandemic by Nick Arnett, who was from the Los Altos, uh, Police Department, gave a really good presentation. I don't think you will be able to do CERT training online, because you have to do it, you have to do some of them, uh, like putting out fires, uh, in real time. So, uh, there are smaller, uh, classes that you can get, that is one or two hours, that they will be offering, uh, in the next few weeks. The, the other thing I wanted to talk about was, I forgot. I'll talk about it later, I can't remember what it is.
Okay. I'd like to say, uh, just one more thing. First of all, it's, I'm really pleased with what we've accomplished this year in terms of our goals, and I want to thank our city manager and staff for making it all happen. So I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mayor, at this point in time, I was going to move on with the 2021 goals, and this could be a good opportunity for a break?
Sure.
If council would like.
Yes, we are getting, we are getting approval. So shall we break for five minutes?
Okay.
Does that work?
Yes.
Yes.
Then I'll just, everybody just put their phone on mute, but don't hang up.
Right. I'll be back in five minutes at not, at eight fifty-eight.
How about eight fifty?
Eight fifty, there you go.
We, we have distributed, uh, bathrooms now, sort of distributed computing, so.
I know, that's not long, we could, we could, we don't have that long of a break.
Yeah, there's no line now.
Right. Yeah.
Hey. I'm back.
Okay, we're still waiting for, uh, Councilmember Alahi and Turner, and Luhand, actually.
Okay, I'm back, and I brought popcorn for everyone.
Smells great. All right, we're still waiting for Councilmember Alahi. Looks like he's completely signed off. No, there he is. Okay.
Salty, it's too salty.
Okay, the gang's all here.
Okay, I'll, I'll pick this piece up here and get us, um, uh, set for the next segment, which is moving into the, uh, 2020, 2021 goals, your proposed goals, and that's attachment two. As we wrap up the 2019, 2020 goals, uh, it's, I think it's useful to note that those goals are not going away, they are being folded into, uh, day-to-day operations. So they serve their purpose by being, um, rising above the waterline of strategic goals, and now they're moving down into the, the day-to-day operations. And so this opens space for your next set of goals for the upcoming year, and again, that's attachment two. Um, and you have a fairly detailed description of those goals and the sub-goals, the objectives underneath, and Steve, uh, will walk through those now.
Thank you, Mr. Spano. And again, you know, what we did this year, which was different from the previous year, was we took the general plan and we looked at the general plan and we said, there's really five goals in there. Quality public service, community character, enhanced mobility, community safety, and environmental sustainability. Pretty clear, high-level goals, top-level goals. And then there's the, the tasks underneath the goals, which are, what is the, you know, the, the work that actually gets done to achieve the overall goal? So I'm going to run through the list right now with you, and I was thinking about going in reverse from goal five to goal four to goal three to one. So if everybody can go to attachment number two. And we'll start with environmental sustainability. This came up in the previous item. We discussed about needing more help, our Healthy Cities policies adoption. There are several, if you look at that document in the packet, the Healthy Cities kind of report card for Montessorino. There are several categories in that report card that if we adopt some policy language, we could achieve higher scores on that report card. And that's what I reckon. These are all recommended goals. By the way, I wanted to emphasize that this list compiles things that are in process, things that council wanted. When I asked council, every council member to provide me two ideas for the year, I incorporated them into these categories. And then things that were ongoing from last year's goals that have not gone below the waterline, so to speak. So that's, this list is a compilation of all those items. And this list is kind of an all-you-can-eat buffet. There's a lot of stuff on here. If council doesn't want an item as suggested on this list, let me know. Some of these things, for instance, pursuit of a Tree City designation, there is a little bit to it where you have to commit 2% in your budget, which is about $7,000 for us. That could be in the form of volunteer labor, tree trimming, planting trees, et cetera. I don't think it would be an issue. But there are some things, the city of Montessorino can afford everything on this list. It's not necessary to do everything on this list if council doesn't see merit in these ideas. But these are ideas that I brought forth, especially in environmental sustainability, because this is ideas that I think, when there was the goal last year to be a greater part of regional conservation efforts and to work on the Healthy Cities items, I brought forth these ideas to help enhance those categories. So the Healthy Cities policies adoption, I would be looking for a show of hands on that. Pursuit of Tree City designation, if council finds merit in that idea. Climate change resolution. I offered an example from a city from Southern California in the packet. LED streetlights, if our engineer Jessica Khan is on my line, she may comment on that. I did a little research on that earlier in the year. And I think we have about 46 streetlights in the city. LED lights last about 20 years. Once you replace them, I think they're a cost of about $300, $400 apiece. We do have a couple lighting districts. We might have some operational things we have to do in that regard. But those are all things that I think that will help promote environmental sustainability for the city of Montessorino. And I would like council's feedback on those categories. At this point, or questions?
Okay, starting with Councilmember Labouvet.
So just a process question, Steve, or Mr. City Manager. How do you plan to kind of prioritize these things? I look in the packet and I, I'm very jealous of these programs that the other cities are running. And I know previously, I was looking at Palo Alto, and they actually would define, you know, in carbon footprint, you know, specific measurable goals that they wanted to achieve. So, so if we basically choose all of the above, are you gonna develop a work plan for all of these things with measurable deliverables against these things? What's your intent here?
Thank you for the question. I will begin with the Healthy Cities program, the dashboard document. And I have it in front of me and it says Tobacco-Free Communities. We have zero of two categories achieved. Now, one of the categories is Smoke-Free Multi-Unit Housing. If this council sees merit in a policy because we will be adding multi-unit housing in Montalvo Oaks to adopt smoke-free policies in that housing, we could score one bullet point in that category. The other category is Smoke-Free Public Events. If Montessorino adopted policy language to, say, at our annual picnic or whatever future events we might be promoting, to say, no smoking at those events, then those two, we get 100% in that category. So some of those things are pretty straightforward. I worked with Mr. Rudin and I included in the packet kind of a very detailed smoking resolution that I was going to suggest if council found merit in it, that we take our existing smoking resolution and at least include these two new categories, but perhaps have Mr. Rudin compare the previous smoking resolution that we have to the one in the packet, which is a sample resolution that covers a lot of things. And maybe we can adopt that new smoking resolution and achieve two of these bullet points. That would be something that could be delivered. If the first quarter starts July 1, it would be in the first quarter of the work plan. I think we would have that done by September timeframe. We have the month of July off, but August or September, we could probably get this one done. And I would be coming up with that work plan in the time of the year when those things are to be completed. And when you mentioned, how do we measure it? Well, in this category, we would measure it by a direct score. Next year, when we get our 2019, or it would be 2020 dashboard, I would hope that we would score higher in these categories across the board. When it comes to the climate change resolution, which I think is primarily where your question was directed at, I would look to the council, perhaps forming an ad hoc committee, taking a couple samples of a climate change resolution, like the one I provided in the packet, which is pretty simplistic. It's probably something that Montessorino is most like because obviously, we don't have a lot of commercial buildings and major thoroughfares and all these other things that other larger cities have. But I would look to council to consider forming an ad hoc committee on adopting that climate change resolution, just as you guys did with the social media policy, as you have done with the SB2 funding and all the other ad hoc committees. So that would be one approach. Or I can come up with a sample policy, just reviewing other policies and council can adopt it. And when it comes to measuring it later in more detail, I think getting it adopted first is a huge step for Montessorino. And I think measuring the results of it later, and that could be part of the ad hoc committee's work, how it will be measured or what will be the next steps after that. But just adopting the ideas now and getting some of these things moving, I think is just a good step forward and a good immediate goal moving forward.
I think, Mr. City Manager, I think the suggestion would be, you know, if we adopt these as objectives, there should be, we should then take the next step as per our process that you just defined in the PowerPoint. These would basically evolve into a work plan and you would have deliverables against each work plan item. You know, in addition to schedule, effort, cost, things of that nature, so it can be quantified and can be fit into both budget planning process and capacity planning process. That would be the traditional way to do this. So, yeah, so I'm just more, my question wasn't specific to this category. It's just more process. So I think that we can just, this is gonna be a laundry list and you're gonna come back with a work plan based on the types of objectives that we agree on. Is that, that's the process?
That is correct. So what I would do is I would create the plan, assuming that council, let's just say council says, "City Manager, we want everything that you've proposed in environmental sustainability category this evening. And we wanna add a couple things, okay?" Whatever the conversation, however develops. I would come back with a plan of when, how, how much. Of course, the how much, I think, will come at the budget. And that's the idea of tonight's meeting is, for instance, help the, in this category, the Tree City designation could cost $7,000 annually. If council says that we would like to pursue this, I will put $7,000 in the budget for that. Whether we use $7,000 or whether that's the equivalent of volunteer labor, well, that, that will be determined later. But, you know, at least for the purposes of, we're doing our annual budget and we have X amount of dollars to spend, how do we want to spend that money to deliver? In this case, it would be environmental sustainability to our community. And then the work plans, after our conversation this evening, those will all be developed later. And then the timing will be, you know, whether it's Q1, Q2, Q3, or Q4, will be developed later.
Okay, so I, so thank you for clarifying process. And I like, I like this whole category. I think these are really good suggestions. Thanks for offering this.
All right, any other council member comments at this time? Is everybody in agreement with Mayor Protem Luther?
Yeah, I wanted to jump in here. And I think it's related a little bit to what Councilmember Labouvet was saying and I think the city manager is responding to, which is, can we have all of these realistically? We may have to revisit that in the budget or when the city manager is looking at putting the time out. I had initially thought that the Tree City designation sounded great, but it also sounded like a fairly significant commitment in terms of time, that the city resources might be needed, or money. But then I was looking at the annex plans and I noticed that there's a fair amount of landscaping in there. For this first year, maybe some of the trees on public lands budget would go into the landscaping around the annex and the city hall changes. So it did seem to me, as I looked at it, that there were great ways to make it doable. So I wanted to comment that I think keeping it in there, if the city manager is confident that it might be able to work in, it did seem like a good idea. So I like the list and I kinda like the having it all. And there may be areas to expand as well. I think Councilmember Alahi probably has some clean energy ideas and things that may wanna come in here as well on environmental sustainability. I don't know if we've had enough time to complete that process. So there may be some more ideas that we need to feed in here. But as a heading, I think it's great. And as a starting list, I think it's a good starting place.
Great, is everyone in agreement? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's, those are very good goals and we're doing the top-level planning here. And as the city manager, Mr. Hernandez, fills in those gaps, we'll have a better idea exactly what should or should not be done. But I think there are great goals to, for us to try to pursue.
Great, and I think we can all agree, we like, we all have item five. Correct? Yep, okay, great.
And thank you. I want to, just one more comment on what Mayor Protem Luther said. And that's exactly what I was thinking. Should council decide this evening that they would like to go ahead with a community center idea, that incorporates more than one idea. Case in point, we can plant a couple trees in front and that would help us achieve the Tree City designation. We can also include elements of the Veterans Memorial, if that's something that council wishes to continue to pursue, which was a carryover from last year's goals. So that's, that's the way I look at it. How can we put multiple tasks into one goal? So thank you for bringing up that point. And we, it sounds like we have consensus on item number five. So is everybody ready for item number four?
Yes.
Okay, so community safety, fire safety resolution. Earlier in the year, I was at a West Valley Mayor's Managers Meeting with Mayor Protem Luther and there was discussion of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan that Wolf Scoutus had done. And there was also discussion about how the county fire, they have different fire codes in each city that they have to kind of work with. And it would be better if all the cities kind of adopted similar codes. And I thought about this being one way to enhance our community safety by coming up with this, this Community Wildfire Protection Plan idea. And I actually signed up for a seminar, I believe it's on the 21st of May, to obtain a grant or how to apply for a grant to pay for one of these, these plans. So I put that in to our community safety. I think it's also important because about a third of Montessorino is in the wildlife wildfire urban interface, the WUI. And we should look at enhancing our fire codes in the general plan as part of a general plan update process, which we'll be discussing more later. Continued Neighborhood Watch. It was mentioned block captains and it was mentioned CERT programs already. Those are ongoing things. I think we've covered that earlier. Mayor Protem Luther mentioned at a council meeting earlier in the year, identifying our at-risk population. And I know that PG&E maintains records of the at-risk population because they have to notify them with the power shutdowns or make sure they have power to keep their, whatever it is, respiration, respirator equipment, all these things that at-risk populations have. So I was thinking, one thing we could do is reach out to PG&E, team up with PG&E and help try to identify those individuals in Montessorino and come up with a plan that what if the power's gonna be out for, you know, a PSPS for two or three days straight, like we had last fall or last winter? And how do we help our population through, through that? That's what that is in there for. Review of the Emergency Operation Plan for Enhanced Preparedness, earthquakes, wildfires, floods, and pandemics. I put this item on the list since COVID-19 came because previous city manager, Brian Loventhal, created the current emergency plan for Montessorino. And it was created in 2014 and it's a very good plan, but it just needs a lot of updates. A lot of the employees that were responsible for certain activities have moved on. There is probably just, it just needs kind of an updating across the board. So I put that in there as a goal. And that covers community safety. If anybody has questions in this category?
Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I remember what I was gonna talk about initially. And it has to do with this category here. I wanted to, I'm the representative for the West Valley Sanitation District on sewer management. And one of the things that I'd like to bring up here is, I have not seen documentation online on the responsibility of a property owner with respect to sewer. So, and that's the sewer lateral. That's the connection from the home to the sewer main. And that's supposed to be outlined pretty clearly on our website as to what the responsibility of the property owner is. So we've had some problems with, with a couple of citizens coming in, complaining about the drainage, right? The drain. And so my other point has to do with the, how to prevent overflow from your drains. You know, leaves, the grass clippings, pet waste, right? And one of the things that, for example, the city of San Mateo has provided is supplies for the citizens that they can use for cleanup if they see that the sewer in front of their house is, has actually overflowed. So it's one of the things we ought to look at in terms of emergency preparedness is to prevent flooding in our streets.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. Clarification, if you were able to obtain a pamphlet or some correspondence from the West Valley Sanitation District, I'm happy to post that online under our services with the PG&E, with the Water Company, with the Fire Department, and all the others. And that's what's great about the internet. You can post all these things and they're accessible to everybody 24/7 off our main website. So I'm happy to do that. When you're mentioning supplies for overflowing of a drain, in the past, Montessorino would go out and we have a few sandbags on the side here that we have in our cage. But logistically, strategically, we all are a small entity and I'm sure that we can jump in during an emergency. We do have a contract with Wolf Scoutus to clean out our storm drains. We do have a street sweeper. We are working on some drainage projects with streets in, throughout Montessorino. Our engineers been working on some of those problem areas when we're redoing our streets. But what did you have in mind with, you know, supplies or whatnot in order to assist residents in the event of the overflow?
Sometimes when we have flooding, it happens over the weekend. We're not around. Some of the cities have actually adopted a program called Adopt a Sewer, where you can actually keep track of, of sewers that have flooded and then contact the city.
Okay. So Adopt a Sewer Program?
Yep, Adopt a Sewer Program.
Thank you for that. I can look into that.
I can talk about it. I can show you some of the, some of the details that go with it.
Okay. I can add that as a bullet point number E on this. Although that could possibly go under the previous category, which is environmental sustainability or enhanced mobility. It can go in, in category three as well. So we can add, we can look at it, an Adopt a Sewer Program. But thank you for, for that.
Mr. Leonardis, when I was down in Long Beach a few months ago, I picked up some pamphlets regarding these, for lack of a better word, they're not sandbags, but they're, you fill them up with water and cities are using them to, to direct overflowing gutter water away from property. And I gave Miss Khan some of these. I don't know if she still has them. I stuck them in her mailbox. But they were interesting and they might be something the city could potentially, in terms of providing supplies, there might be an opportunity with, with a vendor like that to provide supplies. I know personally, we've had to go fill sandbags over, out behind Los Gatos High School. County has sandbags there, but it's a nice idea. Like the, because people are obviously going to come to the city first asking for help.
So I think what you're referring to, it's like a noodle or something like that?
Exactly.
Okay, it's a long.
They make them, they make large ones and they make smaller ones for, for residents. So. Interesting anyway.
Okay.
Are there any other comments on, on community safety? Are we all in agreement that we like everything on, under community safety? Okay. Great.
Moving on to category three, Enhanced Mobility: Transportation Pedestrian Safety Streets. Sign Replacements. I've been very active in that since I started here. There's been some faded signs, some graffiti signs, some old and bent signs. Been working on those, which is an ongoing, trying to get, keep these items below the water line, so to speak. Montes City, Montesereno City Hall Improvements and ADA Improvements and the Community Room. So at this point in time, I'm going to have our IT person, Dave Kizan. He will present the presentation of a walkthrough around the building. You saw the slides in the packet. I'm not going to go through the slides, but he has a, a visual, like a 3D simulation of what it would be like with the new community center, the Annex Building as it's been called this evening. Improvements as well as our existing facility adding the second restroom and moving the front counter to the existing conference room. And the ideology behind this is that we let the public access our lobby easier when they want to come in for planning and building and other inquiries. And it's more ADA compliant. It will be ADA compliant at a very low cost. And the reason we're able to do this is because we can eliminate that conference room on that side of the building and turn that into our lobby. And the reason we're able to eliminate that conference room on that side of the building is because we'll be creating a new conference space in the Annex Building, which is essentially can be called the Community Center or the Community Room, whatever council wants to adopt as, as a future identifier for that. So that room is no longer a strategic room for us that we absolutely need now because sometimes we'll have a council meeting and we'll have another gathering in that other room. Instead, if we had two gatherings at once, we would have them gather in the old, the old, I hate to call it the old post office, with the previous post office location. And then by doing that, we can add that second restroom as well and like I said, resolve some ADA issues. And it's a very cost-effective way of extending the life of our, of our existing facilities as well as being able to bring the community into Montesereno. When we talk about community engagement and we talk about what can we do to bring the community into Montesereno, we can host all kinds of events, speaker series. There can be yoga classes, book clubs, bongo, events for seniors, how to help them do their income taxes, how to show people how to use Facebook. It's just, it could be a community resource center if we have a P S P S and people need to charge their, their iPads, their iPhones, they need to cool down or heat up. If it's too cold or too hot outside, they could come. There's, I, I proposed it with a kitchen feature in there. We can use it as an E O C. If there's a wildfire, the police and fire, they can come and get refuge in that place and have a place to heat up some food and rest, you know? I just look at that, that little room. It's about 800 square feet. And its existing configuration, it's not usable at all. We've been using it for storage. But if we just do some simple, relatively simple improvements when it comes to building, we can really enhance that building's utility. And as was discussed earlier, we could incorporate, you know, the Tree City. We can plant trees. It, it, essentially the, the design requires closing off the turn into the mailbox area, the mailbox drop-off area. But we could put trees out there, create more garden space in this indoor/outdoor space where gatherings could be held for events. And they can work off of the kitchen. They can have access to the restroom and we can get, get people to come to our community center. And we can also incorporate probably a veterans memorial if the council decides to move forward with that idea as well. So by, this, this idea incorporates several, several goals. So, Mr. Kizan, if you're able to present that 3D walkthrough. It's a couple of minutes long and it covers both, both buildings. Now would be the time.
We've been watching it. It's fast.
Yeah, he's showing.
Oh, okay. So it's, I cannot see what you're all seeing. So thank you.
So we're now in the building. We're actually heading towards what would be the old entryway.
And as I talk about it, not all the furniture is in the building. Obviously, the kitchen is going to remain in the same place. The council chamber is going to be exactly the same. Really, the footprint of both buildings remains the same, which is a great plus because I think the community really likes the way that these buildings blend in with the housing on Highway Nine. They're used to the look. They're used to the way. We can maintain the history of, of the buildings. I know we have a stained glass window that's in the old post office. We also have the wrought iron that has the Montesereno logos in it. It's in all the history of our city and our city hall, all of our old photographs. That building is, is that same way and the same footprint. So it pays tribute to that. And we added with the area, which is kind of a loungy area, a television on the wall there. And furniture, of course, can be arranged anyway. We also added kind of a collapsible or folding wall where you could have a separate meeting as well as perhaps you could have the youth commission using the kitchen or having their meeting and, you know, and then have a meeting for seniors in the other room. So it brings two elements of the community together at, at one time, which I think is kind of neat. So this is a, a, presents a real opportunity for the, for the city to accomplish a number of goals. Is the video done?
Yes.
Okay. I will move on to the next bullet, Traffic Calming Policy and Implementation. This is in process. I don't know if our engineer, Jessica Khan, is still on the phone with us, but I spoke to her about this a couple of months ago about traffic calming policy and she's brought it to the Better Streets Commission. And with COVID, I think it, it was, we were just about ready to do it and it got shelved, but we will, we will be back once our, our meetings start back up. Enhanced Mobility, number D, No Right Turn on Richcrest. My previous jurisdiction in Los Gatos, I always used to say we should close a right turn on Richcrest, Tate and Masol off of Highway Nine. Because there was so much cut-through traffic, people would be using that as an alternative to Highway Seventeen. There's downsides and upsides to doing something like this. Relatively easy to implement. I think we can create a sign or purchase a sign and put it in. That's not a problem. And then I think navigation softwares would eventually adopt it into their algorithms that this is what it is. I said Saturday, 10 to 3, May 20th through September 10th. I just picked some dates that kind of covered Memorial Day through Labor Day when high time is. Residents on Richcrest might not like the idea of not being able to access their property. So this would have to be a, a public hearing or they might love the idea. Or half of them might like it and half of them might not like it. But it was just an idea I thought of to eliminate people cutting through on the streets that we actually control, which is Montesereno. We don't control Highway Nine so much. We don't control North Santa Cruz and we don't control Highway Seventeen. But I put that on the list for council to consider if they want to move forward with a discussion on that. Continue Better Streets Program Pursue CPI From Seventy to Seventy-Five, and this is ongoing. If we can hit a CPI of 100, I think that's a great thing. So I appreciate that council has supported bringing the CPI from 70 to 75 earlier in the year. Any questions on this Enhanced Mobility category?
Do you have any questions?
Or comments?
Oh, I, it doesn't look like it, but I do. I actually have one question with regards to the sign on Richcrest. Would it be best to make it both Saturday and Sunday because people go to the beach on both days?
I thought about that, Mayor, and I think that is, you know, essentially up to the community for a discussion. I remember in Los Gatos, a lot of times it seems like on a three-day week and everybody was getting out on Saturday morning and it didn't seem to be an issue as much on Sunday. And then I thought, well, it's kind of a happy compromise because, you know, you're not completely shutting it both days. But I would also look to, you know, Mr. Rude's guidance on this as well because obviously this is something that would have to be discussed. Is there any legal ramifications? Implementation is, is simple. Making one sign and putting it out on that corner. That's, you know, physically, we're not having to move mountains to, to implement it. But as far as whether there's any legal discussion or obviously the public's input, we have to definitely put this on the agenda and say, what do you think? And I hope, the ultimate goal would be that, again, whether it's Waze or whether it's Google Maps or whoever, any, there's probably 10 of them I can't name, but any algorithm would pick up on the fact that, oh, there's no through traffic or from Saturday, 10 to 3, there's no right turn here from this date to this date. Eventually, the algorithm would get passed back by the users and sent back and then the traffic would be less on Richcrest, which is who we represent.
Okay, well, thank you for that. There probably are some legal issues. Yes, Council, Mayor Protem Luthold.
Yeah, I just wanted to jump in here, I, before we move on from this, because I think we are starting more quickly, and just make a comment about the pedestrian, safe routes to school, the Dave's Avenue, Poppy, Vista improvements. I'm not sure if that should go here under Enhanced Mobility or whether that's all under the regular city business and we don't need to bring it up here, but we may want to make some reference to that, safe routes to school and Dave's Avenue improvements here.
Okay. Mayor Protem, if I added still routes to school and Dave's Avenue improvements to this Enhanced Mobility under category, with category A, I could, I can add it.
Yeah, I think it could be under A or a separate item under A.
Okay. Okay.
I think it could probably be under A, Transportation Pedestrian Safety Streets, et cetera.
I will add it to that, that sentence.
Right, okay. Are we all in agreement that we like everything under item three, Enhanced Mobility? We've got a lot of nods. Yep, thumbs up. Great.
Okay, moving on to category two, Community Character. So when I thought about this character, it is, what does your community look like? But what is your community's character, right? You can look at it two ways. What was brought up earlier in the year, the Good Neighbor Resolution. And of course, that was voted through by council, passed by council. Now it would become time to come up with a plan to implement that. And I would be looking probably for an ad hoc committee to put that forth or working with a consultant, a planning consultant coming up to help implement some of those ideas moving forward. Joint Study Session with Montesereno Council and Site and Architecture. There has been a lot of going back and forth with the council and the site and architecture. Site and architecture approves or, or, or might decline a project, then it gets to council and how do we improve the processes so, or the discussions so everyone is on the same page? And when I was in my previous jurisdiction, once a year, council would have a joint session with Planning Commission and council to discuss best practice, what's working, what isn't working, and try to make some steps forward and change some guidelines if needed to improve the processes, to make the workflow easier for the residents moving through. And that's kind of the mission of that. When we come back to normal, could we schedule a joint study session and, and just have an open discussion between council and site and architecture in a public forum and have the public weigh in as well? Review of Design and Architectural Standards. So I think it's good to take a look at some of these policies over time because at the time they were adopted, they were perhaps more relevant. And sometimes they lose relevance, sometimes they gain more relevance. So I think it's just good to do kind of a checkup on that. And that was brought forth by one of the council members and I incorporated that into the list. Consultant Assessment and Evaluation of City Planning Operations: Get Ahead of the Housing Bills. Kind of a carryover from last year and the, you know, essentially the CASA Committee and, and, you know, derivative of that. But carrying it forward and getting ahead of the 2023 RENA planning cycle. How can we best update our general plan for several things? I look at mobility. I look at fire. I look at just the general, environmental stuff that can be written into the general plan. Our general plan, I think, was last updated in 2008, seven or eight. And I think by looking at updating the general plan with some of these, with some of these new categories would be, would be very rewarding. And it would also help us to look at planning for whatever, our, our next RENA cycle as well. Review the Fence Ordinance. I believe this is coming to council on June 2nd. It's on our list and we brought it up earlier in the year and then it, council direction, it went back to staff and it's coming forward again. Early in the, earlier in the year, it was suggested by a council member, an Airbnb or short-term rentals policy. I included in the packet, there's actually a service from a vendor where they go and they identify all the ones you have and talk about how you might be able to collect money from them and all these things. I think what, uh, Montesereno should consider with this is, right now, basically, we don't allow it because we have no policy on it. There is some arguments, well, should we allow it? And if we allow it, how much? And if we allow it, should we allow ADUs? And if we allow it, how does it affect the parking? How does it affect the neighborhoods? How does it affect, you know, what length of time should we allow? What, what identifies a short-term rental versus a long-term rental? And then there comes the point of revenue. Should you pursue taxation? Airbnb collects taxes and they send it to the cities. We would have to adopt either a business license policy to collect taxes or go and adopt, probably send this out to a ballot to. adopt, probably send this out to a ballot to collect TOT. So it gets quite complicated, potentially for not much reward on revenue. But really, I think this is more or less a quality of life issue for Montezarino to consider, because this is, as we're called, the peaceful mountain community. So do we really want to address this, or allow it, or keep it as it is now? And I put it on there because, again, it was brought up, I think Councilmember Alahi brought that forward earlier in the year. SB two Planning Grant Objectives and Implementation. As was discussed earlier by Councilmember Lubavay, we have an ad hoc committee which goes through December of two thousand and nineteen. And now that we actually have the grant money, I'm looking to the guidance, or through the guidance of the ad hoc committee of how we are going to apply that money. We are looking at spending some of that money on developing the software for the in-house building permit processing, as well as hiring a planning consultant, which will help us on the items I just mentioned, fire codes, updating the general plan, and environmental and traffic items for the general plan. That covers community character. Any questions?
Councilmember Lubavay?
Hi, Mr. City Manager. I think, I think, I like the way you actually said it in the previous document better, but in terms of the SB two planning grants, to then hire a planning consultant, and certainly the planning software was in there. But I think originally, when we did this ad hoc committee, the scope was quite broad, the way that ad hoc was defined. And I think we can easily accommodate underneath G to add items C and D as subcategories of item G. So basically, the, you know, the consultant would be used for review and design of the architectural standards in addition to assessment and evaluation of the planning and operations. And then your comment about, this is just a nitpick, but get ahead of the housing bills, that's really associated more with C than it is with D. But, but I don't know, if you would consider kind of consolidating some of these, I think it would make it less wieldly, and then we can come up with kind of one unified plan versus a bunch of sort of disjointed ideas. Thank you.
And Councilmember Lubavay, thank you for your comments on that. I think, I just received the quote for management partners for the planning consultant, the review of the planning operations, and I was going to bring that to council next Tuesday, the nineteenth, assuming that council finds merit in this category this evening. And the idea is to have them come and do a complete evaluation of the planning processes, similar to what they did with the financial policies, and then find out how to better improve those items and update the general plan and all those things. And I do concur that because that is part of the SB two funds, because it's helping us facilitate the housing process, that is kind of the purview it's under, that those items could be included as subcategories of G. So we can, I can change that. I'll make them like G, little ones and twos. Or actually, it won't be G anymore. It'll be A, B, C, D, it'll be F, and then there'll be two subcategories of F, because I'll take out C and D on that list. If that's, if that's what.
Yeah, and then, and then you could, you could raise that up in the category list, because I think that, that's, that's a pretty strong priority. We just haven't made any traction on that whatsoever, so I'd like to get going on that.
I want to emphasize one, one other point. When I, when I made the list, I, whether it was A or G, I didn't really put any emphasis on A being it's going to come faster than G or not. So when we come up with the work plan, we can, some of this, some of these items are low-hanging fruit, like, for instance, we're going to talk about financial policies in a few moments, but I was planning on bringing back the financial policies that we were discussing in March on the May nineteenth meeting as well, assuming that council wants to adopt them again. And there were some proposed changes by Councilmember Lubavay, and that's the direction that was, came from the discussion that evening on March third. So some of these items will come quicker, they'll come instantly, and others will, will put into the work plan of when they can be completed. But I think the first step for C, D, and G on this list is to reach the meeting next week and hire the planning consultant, the management partners, and that will help us move forward on all these items, and we can come up with a work plan.
Okay, Mayor Protem Luthold.
Thank you. Yeah, and moving along with this, I think the Airbnb policy is a great issue for community discussion, and we'll want to bring in a lot of community discussion on that. I don't think it's a bring it up on the council agenda and surprise people thing. I think it's a longer, ongoing discussion, and I do think it's appropriate for the next year to really bring that in. So I like it being on the list, but I think we should be very, very open to community input on that, and not, we don't really have an agenda as to whether we want it or we don't want it, not seeking revenue or including it, we want to be realistic about it. So I think that's a great thing for a year-long project potentially. So that, I like that, thank you for putting that in there. The second thing that I have is, I don't think it's really addressed on this list, but under community character, it looks like we don't know what's going to happen yet on the city picnic, either in addition to a city picnic, which I think is wonderful, or in lieu of a city picnic, I think we need to put something in here about community building. I put out the idea, and I appreciate that it's been run with a bit on the neighborhood watch and the block leadership, but I really want to see about expanding that for community development. And then potentially, if we're going to be under lockdown for a lot longer, how we address community issues in a socially distant universe. I just wanted to point out, one of my neighbors on my block, which is a very small cul-de-sac, called a neighborhood happy hour recently, socially distanced, and everybody brought their drinks and their masks and hung out outside on the cul-de-sac. So it is possible to still engage in community building even in the new COVID-19 world. So I think we may want to look at that, if this is going to go on into the summer, what some of the alternatives are, and make it actually part of community character and community building.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I thought about the picnic, and I thought about it in a couple ways. You know, obviously, it's important to Montezarino, it's our event, you know, it's become very well-received, and of course, you know, so many events, like the Saratoga Car Show was canceled, and Music in the Park in Los Gatos has been canceled officially, everything's being canceled. And I want to go forward with the picnic in some fashion, somehow. I'm, I'm hoping that, as, as we call it, shelter in place is lifted by then, or we can still manage to create an environment at that picnic somehow where we can, we can host it. And there is creative ways. When it comes to the block parties and all the things your neighbors are doing, I admire their creativity on those, in those events. And I hope that they are all doing the right thing with their masks and the social distancing, and, you know, they're not supposed to gather more than ten, ten people for a funeral, and they're not supposed to really gather at all anymore, but hopefully that will be lifted May thirty-first, and there'll be a little more flexibility on some of these things. But we will look, look to the future and keep our fingers crossed, because I think this, the picnic is, it's such a great event. Want to make that happen.
Councilmember Alahi?
Yeah, yeah, we are in a different world, so we may have to do our get-togethers on Zoom somehow, do a Zoom picnic. I know of one organization, they do social gatherings where they, you know, provide a dinner in the evening time. So this, it's somewhat the Ramzan, so when the fast opens, people go to a mosque and eat there. So since they can't go to a mosque now, they've actually sent coupons to everybody who wants to go, and they can go to a restaurant, pick up the food that they would normally get, and take it home, and they can all be on Zoom and, you know, pretend like they're at the same festival. So we may have to become creative on how we set up our meetings, or how we do our picnics, and maybe there would be an event to get as many Montezarino residents as possible on the Zoom thing, and, and give them something they can go pick up themselves and share, share at the same time, or some other creative way of either having a speaker or somebody else do it. The other thing I want to talk about is on the Airbnb and short-term rentals. Does Montezarino have a rental policy at all for any kind of rentals, or does it not? Do you know, Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Councilmember Alahi. Currently, there is no policy for short-term rentals. And when it comes to renting regular homes, what identifies as short-term rentals is thirty days or less. So our policies are essentially guided by the state of California. So we have, we're essentially.
May interject here. The, the city zoning code actually is what's called a permissive zoning code, which, under various provisions in state law and court cases, basically, if you have what's called a permissive zoning code, any use that is not specifically enumerated is considered prohibited. So in order for something to be allowed as a land use, the city has to expressly require it. So theoretically, the city could, at this point, be enforcing a prohibition on short-term rentals, you know, based on what's in the city code already.
Yeah, I'm asking you even a more fundamental question. Do we have, do we allow any kind of rentals under our code? Because if we don't allow, does that mean that's prohibited under that interpretation?
So in terms of rentals, the city cannot legally prohibit a homeowner from doing a long-term rental pursuant to various provisions of law. You know, a short-term rental is generally considered, you know, a commercial use, you know, but usually, a local jurisdiction cannot prohibit, you know, somebody from renting out their house to a long-term tenant.
Good, all right. Yeah, it'd be a good subject to discuss, and yeah, we should, as Mayor Protem pointed out, have to do it transparently, make sure everybody gets a chance to give their input on it before we adopt anything.
Actually, my, I have a neighbor who has been routinely renting out their house, and my understanding is that you are not allowed to rent out your apartment for less than four months in Montezarino. So that is somewhere in our code. But any, Councilmember Turner, do you have any comments at this time?
No.
Okay. I do want to make one quick comment, one, perhaps if we can't congregate. But the other thing is, going back to the review of design and architectural standards, I brought that up because I wanted to make sure that we were, you know, that the houses, that the plans that were being brought forth had some sort of architectural integrity and consistency within our neighborhood. And so I was thinking perhaps that would be something more along the lines of a joint session with site and architecture to review. I'm not quite sure if that's something a grant, you know, the planning people would necessarily do. This is something that's more specific to the type of architecture that exists in Montezarino. So I'm just thinking maybe that that wouldn't necessarily go under G, that it would maybe combine with B. Your thoughts?
I think that, you know, there's flexibility to look at it from both. I mean, that would be a great point to bring up at the joint session with the site and architecture. So I think it could be discussed there, and then also, the consultant could assess it, the ad hoc committee could assess the results of the joint session. So, you know, scheduling the joint session with the council and the site and architecture, that can happen probably, I wouldn't say in June, but in August, and that would be a great time to, to have that. And we can, if we're still operating the way we are operating now, we can do it by phone even. So it would be nice to have it in person, but if we're not able to do it, we can, I think that's the key, having that meeting first, putting everything out on the table, discussing things, determining a future path. At the same time, the consultant would be brought in, the planning consultant, and at the same time, the ad hoc committee for the SB two funds could be meeting and discussing things, and then all these, all these moving parts will be brought together at some point.
Okay, sounds good. Do we have an agreement on all the items under community character? Yep, okay, I'm getting lots of nods, yes.
Okay. I'm surprised nobody's rejecting anything. Thank you, everybody. Moving on to quality public services, and we will start at the top, fiscal prudence, pension and OPEB liabilities reduction plan. And we had a meeting a week ago, and we discussed some of these items, and that we will be bringing forth the results of the discussion in our budget planning. So I think we have a pretty good handle on that one, coming up with plans to address those items going forward, which council could subsequently approve during the budget. Fiscal policies, adoption, and implementation. This item we brought forth March third, and again, it was suggested we have Councilmember Lubavay analyze it, and Councilmember Lubavay has done that, and he's prepared some notes, and I was going to bring this item back to council next Tuesday. And if we adopt that prior to budget, we will have some great policies to guide us going forward on things such as pension and OPEB, on things such as, as Councilmember Alahi alluded to, if we wanted to borrow money, what would be a policy on borrowing money in the future? So a lot of things that the city lacks now will be brought forward in those policies, which were essentially the result of a management partner's examination of our current fiscal policies. User and Regulatory Fees, City Resource Versus Recovery Methodology. I thought about this, and currently, I'm not sure if our city bills, say we open up a file in planning or building, and we charge, you know, fifteen hundred dollars for a permit fee, but we end up having twenty thousand dollars in legal fees through outside consultants or a Sequo report, or Mr., you know, Ruden's extra time on a, on a complicated file for us. I'm not sure if we allocate those charges to those files. So the finance manager and I have been talking about this as being a way to better track costs, better track fees, also reviewing prices per square foot and things like this. For instance, say in Montezarino, we're charging a dollar eighty-nine a square foot, but Saratoga's charging three dollars and eighty-nine cents a square foot. Are we in line with what other agencies are charging per square foot, or are we subsidizing? Are we, are we recapturing enough of what we're charging? And I'm not saying we need to turn this into a profit center by any means, but I think looking at these kinds of things and their recovery is important, because we definitely don't want to be operating as an extreme loss center. So just, that, that's the intention of this, and it's been with the discussion of, I said, the interim finance manager is, as well, you know, how do we, how do we build each file and see where we're at, and what are, are we current? Do you want me to keep going down the list, or do you want to stop at category A here and discuss these three items?
Why don't we start, why don't we discuss category A? Does anybody have anything to comment? Councilmember Lubavay, and then Mayor Protem Luthold.
Yeah, I think, I think for item three, the big impediment there is that historically, there's been no formal forecasting or measurement of standard activities. And so in order to get, I dug into the methodology that the consultant used, and I think this can easily be monitored at the city level without having to use an expensive consultant. It's just a matter of, you need to put in place some, uh, some more operational, uh, policies in order to make this happen. But I, I think it's a, it's a worthy goal. So appreciate that you're doing it.
Okay. Mayor Protem Lutholz?
Yeah, um, Councilmember Lubavay has a good point. Um, we talked about that before and it doesn't seem like an outside issue as much as doing it better inside. Um, second comment on that is that we got a lot of community input when this came up last time. Some of it may have been a little bit uneducated. Um, but there was a huge amount of pushback when we talked about recovery of fees. So I want to make, uh, the city manager aware of that and this is an issue that had extreme sensitivity. So we either need to bring it up early and often and solicit a lot of input or be prepared to deal with that issue when it comes up, uh, when we start talking about recovery. Because it seems like a no-brainer, but, uh, it's not quite so simple. So it's great that it's on here. I just want to point those things out.
And for the, for the council, you know, by law, these kinds of fees really can't exceed the city's cost of providing the service. Um, one of the main reasons for use of a outside consultant is that it's usually recommended that these types of fees be supported by a fee study, uh, of some sort where the city demonstrates, uh, that, uh, you know, what it is charging is, you know, reasonably reflective of what it costs to provide that service. So, uh, you know, for the city manager's benefit, you know, if, if, if an outside consultant is not used, then the city is going to have to, you know, put, put in some effort to basically put together the equivalent of a fee study to justify any sort of, um, modification in the existing fees.
Mayor, if I may comment, so I think, um, you know, what I was thinking with this in working with the finance manager is just to try to see where we are at, uh, do an analysis internally. And then if it looks like we are, um, you know, way underwater on some of these things, again, it's not to, to create a profit center or, or overcharge people or not even necessarily to recover, you know, one hundred percent. That's, that's a difficult thing to do. Um, it's really essentially to track if our price per square foot is too less on some of these larger houses that are complicated projects. And the amount of time and what we're collecting for our permit fees and those things is that, you know, when somebody's building an eight million dollar home and, um, they're paying less than they would pay to build that same home in Palo Alto or Saratoga by fifty percent less, that, that kind of a thing would be one aspect of it. When it comes to, um, looking at like a fine or a water permit or a, a, a permit fee for a water heater or, or something simple, a lot of those things, you want to keep those affordable, um, you know, but things that are, um, have not been visited in a long time would be the idea, or things that require significant legal resources and are those being assigned to a particular file. Case in point, I received a bill from Mr. Rudin's office and it was, uh, pertaining to subdivision on Highway nine. There was about seven and a half hours of legal work uh, for that one month on that subdivision. And I'm not sure if that was number one, assigned to the file, if we just pay the bill and we just pay the bill when it comes. Or if we, it would be better financially to track it. So at least to say, even if we're not able to recover all that time for that, that file, at least to be able to say, well, we spent twenty thousand dollars on legal file, uh, bills last time on a, on a situation like this. So next time we encounter this situation, we can approach it differently. That, that would be the, um, kind of the reasoning behind the thinking here. And, uh, again, I appreciate the, uh, the input, uh, from council on that, on this item.
Councilmember Turner and then Councilmember Alahi.
Yes, I, I'm just concerned a little bit about the timing of looking at, uh, increases in permits at this time. Uh, I, I don't know how many of you know, I did a post today, uh, on Nextdoor asking, uh, our neighbors to contribute to, um, the Oak Tree program because they're about to, uh, lose their staff, uh, from, from COVID. And based on that, I've gotten, uh, private emails from citizens. Some of them are dentists here in, in Monteserino saying that COVID has really affected their practice. So I, I don't think we're going to be immune to COVID. So I am a little bit hesitant to look at, you know, uh, increasing our permits at this time. Perhaps there's a better way to do this. Maybe we can postpone it once we figure out the impact of COVID on our residents. Thank you.
Commander Alahi?
Yeah, yeah, I, I just want to caution, we don't want to be getting into the merits of any discussions. But, um, uh, as far as a permit is concerned, uh, the raising the fees on permits, we did have an evaluation from the consultant last year and it probably economically also would make more sense for, if you're going to do one, we should do it next year rather than, uh, on an annual basis. Uh, to the extent, uh, Mr. Leonardis is, is doing his own analysis of what's going on, I mean, that's, that's probably just his domain and his job to figure out what is going on. And, uh, if permits are fees, you know, and if it comes back and we need to, we probably need to reconsider permit fees anyway, or at least every couple of years. So next year you could get the consultant to go back and take a look at things that are identified that should be looked at.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lubavay.
Yeah, I, I don't think that there is any implication here about actually raising fees. I think what, uh, city manager is attempting to do here is actually put in place, uh, some measurement standards. Uh, so if you can't measure it, you can't, uh, take action on it. And so, you know, short of, yeah, and it's connected to financial policy also for standard activities. So, uh, I think the implication here is really, what is the, what is the, the overall methodology? And in order to define that, you have to measure, have some measurement metrics and then you can actually, uh, figure out where you are. And so it's more of a staff report. I, for me, uh, this is not rocket science. In private sector, companies that do progress-related, uh, revenue recognition do this all the time. And so this, this is not rocket science. It's just a matter of bookkeeping and, and, you know, basically logging time against projects and logging costs against projects. And so you, you know, there's, there's operational excellence piece to this. Uh, I think that's, that's what the focus of this line item is. It's not necessarily in terms of, you know, taking action at, at the end of it, but at least you'll have the information to take an action if, if you actually kind of follow through with this. So, uh, so I, I think it's a worthwhile item. Um, you know, again, it's, it's more operational for me. Um, and then I think that the, the implication of what comes out of this, once we know that half the data that's a differential and that we can justify a later date. Thank you.
I think we're all in agreement that we like item A and the three bullet points under fiscal prudence. Okay. Great. We've got approval.
Okay. Moving on to B, governance and operations. We discussed a little earlier this evening about the MOU and process, an employee handbook, HR policies, procedures, performance metrics. That is very much in process. It is part of the MOU. I received a prototype of the HR manual. It's a kind of a closed session item. We won't get it too much into the details. But my plan is to have potentially a closed session meeting towards the end of next week and next, another closed session meeting. We do have a meeting on the nineteenth. We could have one on the twenty-first. I was going to pull the council if the consultant is ready. Council code of conduct policy, um, this is like an HR sort of policy for our council. And I included an article from Western Cities Magazine, which describes its function. We have things like the ethics policy, we have the values and vision statement, we have the rules and conduct of public meetings. But there are other things that council, uh, needs to be guided on, such as every year you have to do a Form 700. Every other year you have to, uh, um, attend harassment training and receive the certificate. There's just many other things that aren't covered in, in ethics policies or other policies that help guide a council in their roles. And, um, uh, Mr. Spana will be going into great detail on that later on. Online building permit system is ongoing. We discussed that earlier. I compass meeting software, live streaming meetings. Um, right now I have a camera system that we just had put in place. We're working on live streaming through YouTube and we're going to try to do it through YouTube. Um, but I compass brings a cloud-based software, uh, system and instead of, uh, Genesis, or not Genesis, this is Granicus. I call it Genesis. I'm sorry about that. It's getting late. Um, Granicus. And, um, I think it is a better, um, I consulted with the IT department. I think it's a better product moving forward um, to help us with our live streaming and our archiving. Everything's cloud-based in, in our organization here. It's a, it's a major process improvement. It's in process. Annual review process for city manager and city attorney. I don't know if there has ever been a formal process for that, but I would look to, um, the, I think there was an ad hoc committee formed on this one as well. Perhaps. I do not see it on the list. But perhaps there could be an ad hoc committee on, um, to create a formalized review process for the city manager and the city attorney. Operational excellence plan. I do believe there was an ad hoc committee for this. I don't see that on the list either. Oh, here it is. The customer orientation and operational excellence plan. That expires on June eighteenth of two thousand and nineteen. Councilmember Lubavay and Councilmember Turner. Um, I would, you know, again, look to renewing this goal and have, you know, you, uh, those two council members provide feedback to staff in order to, to help implement this, move it forward. That concludes this category.
Okay. Thank you. Lubavay.
Um, so, Mr. City Manager, we did have some ad hoc committees for hiring of the city manager and hiring of the city attorney. Um, I know that, that, um, that I was on the city manager ad hoc committee and we already have, we do have a process for evaluation ready to go. Uh, we just need to start and, uh, review it with you and, and then deploy it. I think we need to do the same thing for the ad hoc committee, uh, for the city attorney. Maybe we can leverage the same document or I know that in some of my other, uh, uh, subcommittees, we have evaluations that we could, uh, leverage from. Um, or we could bring this all into the operational excellence plan. Um, if we, if you go back, there are lists of deliverables or a list of objectives that were stated in that presentation, uh, back last June. Um, that, that I've been watching closely and looks like you're covering, you know, ninety-five percent of those in this plan. So I'm happy to see that, but a lot of it's in, in progress.
Thank you, Councilmember Lubavay. I think, um, probably what council should consider is, you know, adopting or renewing the, um, the ad hoc committees. Again, at the fiscal, when the fiscal year starts July first for twenty and twenty-one. So what I could do is put together a staff report for the June nineteenth meeting when we adopt the budget. And, you know, the operational, for the customer orientation and operational excellence ad hoc expires on June sixth or eighteenth, I think it says here. Um, we could put forward that one. We could put forward, um, the, you mentioned the committee for the city manager and the city attorney. And we discussed earlier in the evening, uh, other ad hoc committees that could be renewed. The veterans memorial is expiring as well. Social media is expired. Causa compact is expired. Really, the only one that is, will be around on the list will be the SB two ad hoc committee and that expires in December, but we may as well renew it for the fiscal year. Uh, so it goes to fiscal year of July first of, uh, twenty twenty-one. But I think that would be a great process moving forward as part of this goals and development. And I would look, of course, for direction from those committees, um, and, and the appointments. Um, so we can get these, uh, get the feedback to, to staff. We can work together and, and get some of these things moving along.
Uh, you know, additionally, I, I will say the Brown Act does provide a closed session exception for pers-, you know, performance evaluations for, uh, a city manager, city, uh, attorney-type positions.
Okay. Any other council member questions? Okay, I, I think then we're all good with, with the item one B, governance and operations. Do I get nods? Okay. Okay. Good. All right. Thanks.
So I'll try to pick up the pace a little bit here. Community engagement. League of Women Voters came to our meeting. I believe it was in April. No, it wasn't in April. It was in March. They, um, I believe they've come to Monteserino in the past with the same recommendations. And those recommendations, I didn't put in the packet, but, um, they recommendate, recommended some things that we could do to, to create more transparency during our elections. Case in point, if a candidate creates a ballot statement or candidates create ballot statements, all those ballot statements could be links on the city website. Um, we could put a spending limit on candidates', uh, election budgets. We could contribute to part of the cost of the ballot statement. I could bring forth a report to council that, that illustrates these recommendations if council wants to take a look at those things or if it's a no, we can, we can leave it the way it is now. Um, so we'll look for guidance on that. Citizen of the Year Award. I put a couple pages in there about that. Campbell has one through their chamber. Saratoga has one through their chamber. We do not have a chamber, but we certainly could create a simple program to nominate a citizen of the year award. I know there are a lot of outstanding citizens in Monteserino doing a lot of great things. And if we had our, our community building next door, if we want to bring them into the council chamber in the interim, we can give them a certificate. We can recognize them at the annual picnic. We can, we can create some kind of program where the citizens nominate a citizen of the year for their great effort. We can put a plaque in our, um, in our lobby like we have for these seniors of distinction. But I thought that would be a simple program we could create to, uh, engage the community. There was discussion about how do we engage the community earlier. Create a resident newsletter contribution guidelines. We just completed that and we will be implementing that before issuance of our fall newsletter. Increased communication with residents. That is ongoing. Since I have come on board, we have added a lot of communications to our, our weekly e-blasts, to our newsfeed on our website. We have added a lot of different information on our website. We have created a history section. We explored use of Facebook, increased use of Nextdoor. And we, we talked about, uh, trying to increase our Facebook and our Instagram more earlier. Um, as well as just phone calls, um, just becoming more involved, uh, in, in response with citizen requests and those types of things. So, um, this is again, a below-the-water-line item. It's a part of daily practice. The more information we could get to our residents, the more service we could provide them, the better. Um, the newsletters, we created a postcard to get them to sign up for our e-blast. I don't know, you probably all received that last week, a green postcard in the mail. So we're just doing whatever we can to reach, um, our residents and keep them informed of what's going on in the city and we will continue to do so. And I look forward to, uh, with the new community center, being able to bring them in and communicate more. Annual city survey and residence service feedback and implementation. I think this goes in conjunction with the customer orientation and operational excellence. Um, a part of that where, um, if we can somehow have the residents do an online survey, tell us how we're doing. We do have surveys that, uh, when somebody takes out a building, um, permit or a planning application, we do solicit feedback on those. And I put the feedback rating on ClearGov on our website. I think we were at ninety-two percent or something like that. But if you guys wanted, if council, I don't want to say you guys, it's informal, if council wanted a more, um, detailed report of, of how we are doing, that would be something that I would look to council's help through an ad hoc committee, probably the operational excellence ad hoc committee. The veterans memorial, we have the ad hoc committee for that. Again, it's expiring June fourth. We had one meeting earlier in the year when I've been on board. I think, as we discussed earlier, if we go and we, um, close off the street out. I think, as we discussed earlier, if we go and we close off the street out front and we put a new sign or trees out front, and we put a new patio out there, there will be opportunities to incorporate some kind of a tribute to veterans and first responders. And as this latest pandemic has taught us, healthcare workers and all these people that we take for granted on a daily basis. So, I think there would be an opportunity there. Questions?
Councilmember questions at this time? Councilmember Turner, did you just raise your hand? Yes.
Yes, I have two comments that I'd like to ask. One is, I think you mentioned the submission, the online submission of permits, right?
Yes, yes.
As we implement that, is it possible for you to create your KPIs, your key product indicators, for what, the good, the process, for how the process went for accepting permits? The review of the permits, for example? Receive, what are the issues for planning entitlements? And then also the issues with building permits? I'd like to see some KPIs with respect to that, rather than saying, well, how was your building permit experience? Yes or no? Was it good or bad? I want to look at some details, so we can actually improve that situation all the time, like with all our other processes. The other one is, I was wondering if you could look at improving our internet service, maybe having a higher bandwidth. I don't even know if that's possible at this point. I don't know if there are companies out there that will probably offer us a fiber optic network of some sort. I looked into this when I was the mayor, and I can't remember what the results were, but I think I got into some stumbling, and I think Mayor Protem Luthold also looked at doing some of this. So, maybe he can comment on his experience, but I think with me, I basically came to a dead end. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. I think with the internet capability improved, that's probably under enhanced mobility. It's more of an infrastructure item. It might be in more than one category, but I can add that as item F to enhanced mobility and have engineering look into that and see what we can come up with. When it comes to the survey that you mentioned, and can we add that to our building and planning functions? I think that's probably one way to handle that. Of course, that's what we do now, more of a paper format. We give them a document at the end of the process. As we, whether we're calling the insurance company, or we're doing something with the bank, or whether it's a fast food restaurant, everybody now has an electronic Q and A that you answer, and they tally all the data, and they use that to increase their experience, right? They get the direct feedback from the customers. So, I'm thinking that's probably something that we can implement, and whether it's just for permitting, whether it's just for, you know, building or planning permits, or our whole organization, we'd like to get some clarity on that. And then it would be awesome, again, if that was part of the operation of the customer orientation and operational excellence. If that ad hoc committee can meet and work with staff to help create that, I would look to their guidance. And I want to say one other thing about item number seven, the Veterans Memorial. The objective is to have a modest tribute, something that fits with the motif of the city, something that we want to honor our, you know, the veterans and the first responders and those who have done so much to help us with our freedom. But the objective is to, you know, make it fit with the city and make it something that the public can contribute to and participate in and all those things. So, that's, that was the thinking on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Lovave.
Hi, Mr. City Manager. Just to backtrack just a tad, so the online building permit system, this has been going on for almost a year now. I've never seen a requirements document or an implementation plan for this. I hope that in the upcoming work plan, that items of this nature, whenever you're going to do a big IT deployment, I really do want to see a requirements document to say, you know, what are we trying to achieve? What is the, you know, what are the desired outcomes? And then actually have an implementation plan with a schedule against it, so that we can see and track the progress against those higher-cost items, you know, even if they're being paid by a grant. It should go in a very deterministic way. That's just a matter of standard practice. With regard to the annual survey, that was also something. I've always been jealous of Palo Alto. Palo Alto does a annual, a quite extensive annual survey with their residents every year to find out what do they want to do, and they use that as to incorporate into their planning process. We're a little late for this year, but, you know, I think that if we can create the process around that, I think that would be great. And, you know, I think that the planning surveys are probably a bit limited in scope. I think, you know, those builders and so forth are, is a very small subset of the entire residents of Montessorino. We want to try to figure out and solicit, you know, general feedback for all services and so forth, and have some solid metrics around that. I think the last comment is, I liked your idea about the increased communications that we should, you know, the Clean Water Board did a great job with their social media launch. They're really effectively using Facebook and Twitter and items like this. I don't know if it's exactly parallel to what we're doing, but yeah, that would be great if we could get more of our city message into people's feeds versus having them try to come to our website. So, those are just a few ideas. Thanks.
Thank you.
And other councilmembers? Okay, then are we all in agreement that we like the item 1C, community engagement piece? Yes? Okay, we got a thumbs up? All right.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for your guidance on these items. I know the hour is getting late, so I will move back to our facilitator, Mr. Spano, and he will take us through the rest of the program this evening.
Very good. Thank you, City Manager Leonartis, and we are on to our last item for the evening, which is governance items. And so, you heard the city manager mention the council code of conduct. And so, as part of attachment five in your packet, you have the proposed council code of conduct and several other governance documents, including the Western Cities article, Beyond Ethics, establishing a council code of conduct. And so, just to set the stage here and get feedback from council on some direction going forward, you have your ethics policy, and it was developed in 2012. You've amended that several times over the last, over the last several years. You also have several other documents. You have regulations and guidelines to conduct public meetings. You've got a resolution, 1691.7, on placement of items on the agenda, and of course, your code of ethics policy. So, as the Western Cities article makes the case, that beyond ethics, it's almost mandatory to have the ethics policy. The question is, do you need and do you want to have a council code of conduct policy? So, Council, City Manager Leonartis has put together a proposed code of conduct policy, and as you get a chance to look through that, what that really ends up looking like is a council handbook. It's not so much the legal requirements, it's more of how to fulfill your governing role. So, it has norms and guidelines, council-to-council relations, council-staff relations, communications with the public. And so, the question on, there's really two questions here on the table. Would you, do you find value in adopting a council code of conduct policy? And then the second, if the answer to that is yes, then the second question on the table is putting all these governance documents together, and that is collapsing them not into a single document, but into a packet of governance documents that would really clarify and provide a comprehensive view of your, of governance guidelines, principles, and legal requirements. So, just on that first question, the council code of conduct policy, reactions, thoughts to, reactions to that, and if you had a chance to look through that in attachment five, any specific comments on what the city manager has put together?
Mayor Protem Luthold?
Yeah, I just wanted to show I'm still awake here. The, I did take a look at this, and I think it's a good idea. I appreciate it pulls it all together. One concern I have going forward, I think we should look at this in greater detail, because one of the concerns I saw was that we create a code of conduct, and then we have to categorize any breach of the code of conduct into minor or major. Major triggers a full legal review and follow-up, whereas minor simply ignores it. So, I think, I like the overall concept, but I think there's, some of the details need to be looked at very carefully, hashed out, and fine-tuned a little bit, work with legal counsel on this, exactly where the lines need to be drawn. But I was for the code of conduct overall, and I think it's a great job so far. I think it's about 90, 95% of the way there, actually.
Great. And so, Councilmember, that relates to the enforcement sections of the code of conduct.
Yes, I have similar comments to Mayor Protem Luthold, and it has to do with, I do agree, we should have a council code of conduct policy, but in order for it to be valuable, you need to be able to list out what the ramifications are for not following the code of conduct. Otherwise, it's just a document. Thank you.
All right. Any other councilmember, Councilmember Lovave?
I'll just chime in that, yeah, I can support this. This looks very reasonable to me. I would like to kind of dig into and wordsmith it a bit, but I think it's, it is a great start, and I'm, I agree with the, that we can put this in place, and it would really flush out our governance documents.
Okay. Councilmember Lawler, any comments? All right, then, then moving forward, should we wordsmith this now, or back to a future, to the next meeting? What do you suggest?
Mayor Lawler, if I could make a suggestion. So, you have, as we know, the ethics policy, the values and visions document, the meeting, the policy to conduct the meeting, 1691.7. This could be an additional document. We could try combining the other documents. We could bring it forward as, in itself individually, as a agenda item and discuss it, as the Mayor Protem suggested, that what distinguishes a significant legal item versus kind of just a, don't do this anymore, it is a verbal warning. So, I think that, you know, I would just be looking for council's guidance on that. Should we include the ethics policy incorporated into this as kind of a prelude? And should we then combine this as an appendix to the 1691.7 or such? There's a little bit, I noticed after I created the report, that at some point, some language, which was similar in the very end of this policy, was also incorporated into your 1691.7 last year. So, we would obviously eliminate the overlap, but this was just a draft idea to bring the concept forward. And quite honestly, every year, I think it would be great as, maybe after the, when the new mayor and Mayor Protem are nominated, or when the committee appointments are chosen, that this is reviewed on an annual basis and adopted, so everybody understands that, you know, this is, these are, it's kind of like the handbook, essentially, for council members. So, that's the main goal, and how we get to that goal and the path forward, I would just be looking for. I can bring it at another council meeting in a staff report.
Okay. Mr. Luthold?
Yeah, I actually really like City Manager Leonartis's comment there. I think we could work on this as our council right now, but I really like the idea of giving it to the new council as they come in in January, February, every year, before they get into the budget process. This is something that they might want to take a look at and work around if they want to make any revisions to it, or if they want to focus their views on it. So, I think this is something that can come up right away for us, and then we could pass to the next generation. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Oh, Councilmember Luthold? I'm sorry, Councilmember Lovave, it's an L word. I'm getting tired, sorry.
So, I think Steve, the City, Mr. City Manager was asking us whether we want to incorporate this into 1691, so that's a, that's an ordinance, or it's a, it's part of our municipal code. So, I'm not opposed to that, consolidating these two documents, if that, if everyone else kind of agrees, that's a good way to go. I would give this document a little more teeth in that, for that matter, so.
Great. I agree with you, Councilmember Lovave. I like the idea of putting it all together into a packet of governance documents. So, I guess we can all agree that we approve of creating a code of conduct policy and putting it all together in sort of a handbook for council?
So, Mayor, that would be a consolidation of the 1691.7, the proposed council code of conduct policy, and potentially the ethics policy. And keep in mind, they can still be separate chapters, or one could be an appendix of or whatnot, but the idea is to have kind of all the guidance in one location to help, as Mayor Protem mentioned, Luthold, that when new council members come onboard, they understand all the best practices and what's required of being a council member, and I think adopted on the annual basis, have everybody review it and sign it as adopted at a council meeting.
Okay, thank you. I think we all agree. So, thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Rudin, I wanted to ask one question of the city attorney. Based on what Councilmember Lovave said, would it be a problem to merge or incorporate as either an appendix or whatnot, this into 1691.7? Or should we call the whole thing the council code of conduct and incorporate chapter 1691.7 into that ordinance? How, what would be required of council to, if we were to prepare a staff report on its adoption?
Okay, let's see. Hold on, hold on. I'm, okay, I'm on. So, I believe Mr. Rudin is having difficulties, and so keep.
Okay, I can follow up with him later if.
So, I could read the email if you'd like.
Okay.
"With regard to wordsmithing the policy tonight, the agenda item is described as strategic goal setting. Since we haven't put the policy for adoption, we shouldn't adopt it tonight." Those are his words.
Okay, yeah, that, we're all in agreement there, that it will come back at a future council meeting.
Yeah, otherwise, I, he was not able to call back in. Doesn't look like it.
Okay, so it sounds like we have wrapped up that item for now, and it will come back to council, and if there's. And if there's, if there isn't anything else at this point, we can move towards wrap-up. City Manager Leonartis, is there anything else to address before we move to wrap-up?
Well, I just want to say thank you to the council this evening for hanging in here. I know it's been a long meeting. This is a very important meeting. It's a very ambitious work plan, and we look forward to having too much work. I'd rather have too much work than too little work. I look forward to working with you and achieving this, these items during the coming fiscal year. And I look forward to support through ad hoc committees and working in conjunction with staff to, to complete the plan. So thank you. We will be presenting the fiscal ramifications of what we voted on this evening at our budget hearing. Probably next week, we will incorporate some of those for our pre-budget meeting.
And may I say thank you to Sean Spano for, for helping us through this?
Well, thank you. It's been a, it's been a pleasure working with you all this evening.
Yes, and I also would like to say thank you, Sean, for helping guide the process now for, I guess it's our fourth, fourth year. So we look forward to other years to come.
Excellent, very good.
Melinda Walker is out there somewhere drawing all this as we speak, so thank you to Melinda Walker and our staff that has been online with us this evening throughout the process.
All right, and I guess we can all say thank you for all your hard work, and thanks for hanging in there. And I get time to turn to the council on May 12, 2020.
Yeah. I, I'd like to thank everybody also, and I just had a question. As far as Mr. Leonartis and the staff is concerned, is it, is it possible for them to also show up on the monitor so we can see them as they're talking? And secondly, as far as the public is concerned, we're limiting them to just sending emails. Isn't there a way for us to have them join online? And we can see, at least they can talk online like everybody else is doing on the phone? And I think we should get there, because I think there would be better public participation if they can actually participate, rather than just send emails or questions. So if, Mr. Leonartis, you can look into that. I think that would be better for the citizens to participate, or for anybody else who wants to comment, because just sending emails and drafting may not be very conducive.
Thank you, Councilmember Alahi. Yes, this has been very challenging. I originally had this meeting planned for, I think it was April 7th, and because of the, you know, the second shelter in place order, we weren't able to do this. I wanted very badly to have this be open to the community, have it be, you know, of course, Mr. Spano in person, and Melinda Walker in person doing her drawing. And it just, it was unfortunate that we weren't able to utilize all those, those items in person. But in the future, that's no reason why we can't, as a matter of fact, staff probably could have been available via video this evening. I think they chose to call in on the telephone and just listen in. But in the future, we can, when we have meetings, we'll definitely require staff to, to phone in if they are presenting a report. And when it comes to the public commenting, I will work with our IT department to see what other options are out there. Most cities have gone to submit your comments, and we'll read those, submit your written comments, and we'll read those, because of various things, things like Zoom bombing and other things that have occurred. But it's just the times we're living in, and we have to see how much longer we have to live in, under these circumstances. It's been challenging because also we have a couple of public hearings coming up, what are land use issues. And I know very much that the public wants to come in and participate live and, and, you know, right in front of the council, just the way we always used to do it. And we're, we're kind of, you know, as you mentioned earlier, we might be in this thing for a while. If we're in this thing and we're six feet apart and we're wearing masks, you know, that's better than kind of what we're doing here in some aspects. So we're just looking to the county for guidance and what the next set of rules will be. And I will try to work with IT in the interim to see if we can come up with a better process on, on public comments. It seems to work fine these last couple of times with the clerk reading the comments and myself reading the comments, but if there's a way for them to, you know, log in in person and do something, I will see what we can do.
Yeah, yeah, take a look at it, because I understand the Zoom issues, but you can almost control that now, and they've done some security checkups. But you should be able to turn the presenter, make the person a presenter for two or three minutes, and then turn them off after they're done, because that, that would be easier for them to communicate and for us to hear them. If you can't see them, at least we should be able to hear them. And if you can, if, if, the technology is there, and for us not to offer it may not be appropriate at this time. I think you've had enough time now to try this out, so you should be able to go to the next level. So far, so good. But if you can get, get that up to speed, that I think would work better.
If I may, there, there have been some issues tonight. Our attorney was, something happened with him, and he was, he came back in only listen mode, and was not, they were unable to make him a presenter, so it's not, it's not really tweaked yet.
And Liz, I am back, so that issue was resolved.
Okay.
Welcome.
Good. Are we officially done?
Mr. Spano, did you have anything for council? Were you, you had on your slide that you wanted meeting feedback. Did you want that in writing from council?
No, if anybody, if anybody had any reactions, responses to how the meeting was run tonight, any suggestions for how we might improve it, that would be helpful.
And would you like that correspondence via email from council to me, the city manager to you?
That would, that would be excellent. And, and I know one of the suggestions would be to meet in person. That would make for a better meeting, but I'm, I'm actually quite impressed that it went very well tonight, given, given the technology.
I'm grateful again that, you know, we were able to get through all this. This is quite a bit of, of meeting this evening, so thank you, and thank you to the council and Mr. Spano, and all those who have participated, staff and IT and everyone else.
Yes, thank you, everyone. We did it.
All right, thank you.
All right, everyone, have a good night.
Yep. Bye-bye.